All right, it looks like we are all here. So let's go ahead and get started. The City Council is reconvening from closed session. And we have this to report. Closed session, report of May the 9th, 2018. By a vote of 4-1, with me as the mayor voting no, the City Council has accepted the resignation of City Manager Laura Gill. Miss Gill's last day with the city will be Friday, May 11th, 2018. Assistant City Manager Jason Berman will serve as interim City Manager following Miss Gill's departure pending further action of the City Council. And that being the case, I want to adjourn the closed session and call the regular council meeting to order on Wednesday, May 9th at 6:41 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, May 11th at 1 PM and Wednesday, May 16th at noon. It's being closed captioned; it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the speaker cards, the blue cards can be found at the back of the room, provide it to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And if you could all address the flag, like to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Would also like to invite members of the public to join the City Council in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Take us to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close extension? Right. Next item.
We have no closed session items under Section 3, which will take us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is Proclamation Recognizing May 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month. If I could ask, is Courtney Vasallo-Arozina or Representatives Excellent of the Lupus Foundation Northern California come on up? Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Courtney Vasallo-Arozina.
Corey Gibson.
On behalf of the Lupus Foundation of Northern California and my fellow Lupus Warriors of Elk Grove, I am happy and grateful to receive the City of Elk Grove's resolution. Thank you, Mayor, especially you, Vice Mayor, for pushing that through and the rest of the City Council. Lupus is an autoimmune disease of which we both suffer from. Your body's immune system attacks your own tissues and organs. Lupus can affect many different body systems because any tissue or organ can be attacked. Commonly joints, skin, kidneys, blood, cells, brain, heart would be the order in which it would go. Usually starts with just the worst case of the flu you've ever had is what it feels like. Inflammation, fatigue, joint pain, fever. It's incredibly difficult to diagnose because it mimics any disease because it can attack any other tissue. For example, mine finally got diagnosed after eight years because it started mimicking leukemia. And I had a bone marrow biopsy at my 20th birthday and they finally were able to see that, in fact, it had taken over my kidneys. And I was started on a course of chemotherapy immediately. They call it the cruel imitator, I mean, the cruel mystery and the great imitator. Unfortunately, even in 2018, lupus remains not only incurable but without any great treatment options. Doctors still are prescribing antimalariales, steroids, immunosuppressants, and chemotherapy. Anyone can get lupus, but there are certain factors that make them more susceptible. Because of this, it was really important, especially to get Elk Grove involved. This is primarily known to attack a diverse group of people and Elk Grove has become a very diverse community. Specifically, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and Hispanics are at risk. Women tend to be more than men, but as you see, Mr. Corey is here. If autoimmune disease is running in your family, then it is more typical that you will get it. If you already have an autoimmune disease, your chances of getting it are more like, are greater. You rarely ever just have one autoimmune disease. 1.5 million people have lupus and very, very, very few people actually know about it. So May is actually National Lupus Awareness Month. And this year, we are trying to make sure that the cities, the counties, the states, all different levels of government acknowledge it so we can start to spread awareness so we can create a sense of community for these 1.5 million people. We just asked that if, we're not being, you know, it's a really difficult disease and I think especially people don't realize that you go on chemotherapy for it. And it attacks people that are younger and that are moms and dads and students. And we both have had to go through school with this. We've had to work with this. I have had kid, a child with this. We're trying to lead normal lives and just a little awareness and compassion can go a long way. And we're very, very, very happy that Elk Grove is starting off this month with this proclamation. So, thank you.
I think Councilman Hume has something for you as well.
Get over here. Usually we have you speak after the presentation of the proclamation, but that's quite all right because you actually saved me from reading a lot of the information contained in the whereases. But I will say, whereas more than 5 million people worldwide suffer from the devastating effects of lupus and each year another 100,000 men, women, and children will be diagnosed with this disease. Now I can skip a bunch of statistics because you hit on them. And whereas early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical to the improvements of the quality of life and survival rate of lupus sufferers and increased public awareness, education, and research are the key to winning the battle against lupus. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Elk Grove, hereby proclaims May 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month and calls upon all residents of the City of Elk Grove to unite on this day in a showing of support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks. Next item, please.
Take us to item 4.2, Presentation by Republic Services for the winners of the Trim Your Waste Contest.
Do I have a clicker?
We have the, you can use the keyboard that's immediately below. If that'll work out for you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Sun, council members. My name is Anna Rulon. I work with Republic Services, your friendly recycling and trash neighborhood company. And I'm a recycling coordinator there and my focus is here in Elk Grove in outreach and educating residents here in Elk Grove. So I have a couple things to talk to you guys about tonight, but the first is the Trim Your Waste Contest, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with by now. So this is a contest that we do annually to reward our residents for recycling properly. It's very important in our industry that trash and recycling are separated properly. It's something you don't think about a lot, but it affects, everybody does it daily. It affects our daily lives. So when we have the opportunity, we like to reward our residents. So this contest, what we do is we separate the neighborhood into 12 different areas. I randomly pick one house in each of those areas to go out to on that house's regular recycling service day, so not Green Waste Week. And I dig through their recycling bin. And if I find zero contamination, which means zero garbage or something that isn't recycling, then I reward that house with $100. And if I do find contamination, then I go to their next door neighbor's house and I keep searching until I find a house with no contamination. So in the past, it has taken me about 60 or 50 cans until I find 12 winners. And this year, that number was cut in half. So it only took me 30 cans to find those winners, which means that our residents are improving in their recycling habits, which is awesome. So the households that are in attendance tonight will be getting a $100 Visa gift card. And then I'm also going to be raffling off an additional $200 Visa gift card for the houses that are here tonight. Not all of the households can make it. They'll still be getting $100, though. So there's a picture of me out in the pouring rain digging through someone's recycling bin. So this, we don't just do this to give people $100, even though that is fun and awesome. We do this because proper separation is super important in our industry. And as I'm sure you guys know, a lot has been changing in the recycling world all around, all around the world, every country. People are getting stricter about recycling and environmental policy. So it's very, very important that people put the right items in the right bin. It reduces costs on our end when it comes to processing and shipment. It increases the value of our commodities when they're not dirtied with garbage or food. It makes our routing more efficient, less contamination in the bins and in our bales that we ship off. It increases our diversion rates. And all of those things, when you put them together, equals lower rates for our residents. So the important thing, what is actually recyclable? So when I'm talking to students or residents in the city, we have five different categories of what's recyclable. Paper, cardboard, plastic, glass, metal. This year, we really tried to urge that everything is empty, clean, and dry so that all of the people that we give our recyclables to are happy and there's no contamination. So if I got to a bin that had a can or a bottle that had food in it, then that would be contamination and they would not win. So without further ado, I'd like to invite any of the winners up here tonight. I'm not going to call you all separately. So if you're one of my winners, come on up and I will give you $100 and we'll take a picture and then I'll give you an additional 200, maybe. So thank you to these households who recycled properly. I'm sure not all of them even knew we were doing a contest, but they recycle properly anyway. I have four households, right? One for you. And then could I get the mayor for a picture real quick? Can I steal you? Awesome. And then let's all get around me like you know me and you're so happy you just won $100. And we'll take a picture with the dumpster. Yeah. And say trash. All right. And I will pull a winner for additional $200. You guys got a 25% chance. And now I'll pull out my miniature card. Oh. I'm not important enough. No cheating. All right. Vespos Way.
Thank you. Good draw. Good draw. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. And again, I just want to thank, obviously, our 12 households, especially the four that showed up. They make our job a lot easier when the bins are clean. And then, of course, thank you to the City of Elk Grove for your ongoing partnership. And that is all. I'm just staying up here because I'm also the next presentation.
Okay.
All right. In case you forgot, in the last 30 seconds, my name is Anna Rulon. I work with Republic Services and I'm here to give you guys a quick annual update of all the things that we did in 2017 for your residents. So our residential package includes a lot of stuff. We have our curbside services. We have trash that we pick up weekly. We have recycling and green waste that we pick up biweekly. We have appointment-based pickup of sharps. Curbside collection of used motor oil and oil filters. That one, you don't have to make an appointment. We have the bulky waste cleanups, composting workshops, curbside Christmas tree pickup, LED holiday light recycling. And of course, we have special services for our elderly residents and residents with physical limitations. I'm going to touch on our outreach and education highlights from the 2017 school year. So one of the coolest parts of my job is that I get to talk to students throughout Elk Grove Unified School District. So last year, I personally presented to 20, almost 2,500 students over 82 classrooms. And I talked to these students for about 45 minutes about the waste cycle, the science behind landfills and how stuff decomposes, why it takes so long to decompose, the importance of waste reduction and recycling, and of course, what is actually recyclable. Littering, pollution in the ocean, and the four Rs, which are reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot. And there's a picture of me talking to some students, I think it's a preschool nearby, and we brought the truck out and all of them got to sit inside. And of course, they all honked the really loud horn. We offered two composting workshops last year, both completely free for residents. They taught traditional backyard composting. We had them at the beginning and the end of the hot months, so April and October. All of the residents went home with an hour's worth of knowledge and then a free composting bin and a bag of compost to get started. And these workshops are so popular that once you guys put it in the newsletter, they fill up within about two hours. And they're so popular that we're actually having more composting workshops this year in 2018. We also do Trim Your Waste, which I'm not going to tell you about because I just told you about it. But here are four fun pictures of me finding stuff that is and is not recyclable in people's bins. Last year was our second year of doing Reuse Roundup. So for this campaign, we drop off clean bins at schools in the city that wants to participate. And during the last two weeks of school, the students and the teachers put material in the bins that is reusable school material. So writing utensils, paper, binders. We collect it, we sort all of it at a one-day event, and then we donate it back to Elk Grove Unified Title I Schools, after-school programs, libraries. And this year, we actually got a little bag of tennis balls and we donated those to an animal shelter. And then to incentivize the schools to participate, we award the school with the most material, $500. And this past year, that was Arlene Hind. We attend a lot of events. I'm sure if you guys have been at those events, you've seen our booths there. We do sponsorships, we service events. We have booths with educational material about recycling. I'm not going to go over every event that we went to last year because we would be here forever. But here are some fun pictures. The middle picture was us at Running of the Elk last year where we had our sustainability stations. We had them again this year. And we will have these stations in action at AmGen next week if you guys make it to that. Here are some pictures from us at AmGen last year. We had a little mini Kid Zone, so that was fun. And then a couple pictures from 4th of July where we had our big Kid Zone. And then we also, so we sponsor events that are city-sponsored but also lots of nonprofit organizations here in the city. One of our favorites is the Birdies for Baby Golf Tournament that gives money to chicks in crisis. So I did throw a couple pictures from that in here because our booth was 80s-themed last year and it was super fun. And here are a couple pictures from the Multicultural Fest where we gave out the backpacks with the mayor. And then, of course, our truck, nice and pretty lit up for the Dickens Parade. So we've been doing a customer satisfaction survey for a couple years in a row now. We did this past one at the end of 2017. We had almost 200 participants, which is double how many participants we had in the previous year. Our overall satisfaction rate was very good, almost 84%, which is 5% higher than it was in the previous year. And to incentivize residents to participate in that, we gave $100 out to a random person. I'll go over these numbers really quickly because they're super boring. But we pick up a lot of trash and recycling. These numbers are, is the trash that we actually landfill. So 41,000 tons of trash and a ton is 2,000 pounds. Illegal dumping at the request of the city. And then a small amount of the bulky items we pick up are landfill. These numbers are all the tonnage that was diverted. So anything that didn't get landfill, it got recycled or reused. So green waste and recycling would be our largest tonnages for that. And then we also recycle or find a way to reuse bulky items, oil, oil filters, e-waste appliances, and sharps. So we strive for the highest diversion rate possible. I personally strive for a rate of 100%, but I'm not there yet. We are required to hit 40% each year. And in 2017, we hit a little bit over 44%, which is a little bit higher than 2016. So that is good. We are improving. And as you guys know, we have a contract extension that's going to be going into full effect in July, on July 1st. I wanted to point out a couple of the new things that come with the new contract. We're going to have curbside battery collection. So instead of residents having to take their batteries elsewhere, they can, starting July 1, they can put their household batteries in a clear Ziploc bag, put it on top of their recycling bin on recycling day. Our trash driver, or recycle driver jumps out, grabs the bag, and they get recycled. Super convenient. They don't have to call in for that. We also are switching the way that we do bulky waste. We already started this back in January 1. So residents can now call and schedule a bulky pickup three times a year instead of us telling them when we're going to pick up their bulky. So this is much more convenient for residents and it will also reduce scavenging around the town. So we're really excited about that. And we're going to have more campaigns as well to increase diversion with this new contract going in full effect July 1. So that is all I have for you guys. I have my municipal sales manager in the house with me, Lisa Avila. So if you guys have any questions, her or I are happy to answer them.
That was a great presentation.
Thank you. I try.
It's a lot more cheerful than what we used to.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you much. Any questions?
Just thank you for everything you do.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Next item.
Take us to item 4.4, which is a proclamation recognizing May 20th to 26th, 2018
Well, I'd like to thank Kristin Nelson and her staff for actually putting that together. She, her and her staff did a terrific job. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Bob Murdock, Public Works Director for Elk Grove. Once a year, we recognize a weekend in May as Public Works Week. This year, it's May 20th through 26th. And this gives everyone the opportunity to highlight the fundamental role, critical role that Public Works plays, not only in Elk Grove but across the nation in delivering really essential services that the citizens use every day. And so I think Public Works contributes in a very fundamental way to the quality of life. And so the better we do our job, the better, the better it is for the citizens. So it also gives me the opportunity to do a couple things. First, promote Big Truck Day and also to highlight a few things my staff has done, my terrific staff and the terrific work they've done. So for Big Truck Day, Big Truck Day is May 23rd from 11:00 to 4:00 PM at Laguna Reserve Marketplace. That's at the southwest corner of Bruceville and Whitelock. This is tailored toward really young kids. We're going to bring construction equipment out. They get to climb into the construction equipment, sit in the seat, climb into a city bus. We're going to have other activities. So it's free. I encourage parents, bring their children out. Let them climb on the, on the equipment and have a good time. And, you know, we look forward to it. It's always been a terrific event. We moved it this year. So please remember, it's at the southwest corner of Bruceville and Whitelock, two weeks from today, May 23rd, 11:00 to 4:00 PM. Now that, take a few minutes to highlight some of the work of my staff and to thank my staff for all the hard work they do. I'd like to at least go over a couple of accomplishments over the last, over this fiscal year. In Integrated Waste, the previous speaker spoke about a new franchise agreement. As part of that agreement, we were able to restructure the fees and provide a franchise fee revenue to the general fund of $1 million a year to help with other city services. Transit, we implemented the comprehensive operational analysis and reduced costs by $180,000 per year. Capital projects, we're on track to award this fiscal year 30 construction projects with a total value of $75 million. That's an increase over last fiscal year of 19 projects and the previous fiscal year to that was only 15. So we've basically in two years doubled the number of construction projects we're awarding. Now, we're also aggressive with grants. We're on track this year to apply for 14 grants. That's in, that's a number higher than we've ever achieved in the last six years. And I think some of that is paying off. We, we recently received, partnering with the JPA, $7 million for Grantline Road and $3 million for Cammer. We also assisted with Caltrans and they received a $15 million grant that's going to build HOV lanes on I-5 for the first time from Highway 50 down as far south as Elk Grove Boulevard. That project is actually designed and is ready to list. And as long as the CTC staff, CTC board approves it next week, I believe Caltrans is going to advertise it this year. In addition, as part of that $18 million, $1,000 is going to come to Public Works in Elk Grove. And we're going to build a cycle track on Franklin Boulevard from Big Horn Boulevard northward to the Sacramento City Limits. And the city of Sacramento is working on their side to build a cycle track up to the Franklin Light Rail Station. So we're going to have, for those that don't know, a cycle, cycle track is essentially a separated bike lane. So instead of driving right next to traffic separated by a white line, you're actually going to have somewhat of a physical barrier and more room to operate so people feel safer and promotes the use of bicycles for commuting purposes. We have a number of projects under, under construction. It'd be hard to miss them. Aquatics Center is under construction, Community Center, Bradshaw Sheldon Roundabout's about to start. Animal Shelter, groundbreaking is taking place. We have the SEPA infrastructure under construction, the Bilby and the Big Horn Extension along with a sewer, a new sewer system in order to promote the Job Center in SEPA. And next week, you'll be receiving a recommendation to award a contract for the reconstruction of Waterman to Bond, from Bond to Sheldon that includes the addition of bike lanes. In addition, we finished our ITS Phase 4 project. So for the first time, we actually have, are connected to all 148 traffic signals in, in the city. We moved the, the Traffic Management Center to City Hall and now we can actually operate and control and adjust signal timing in real time based on what we see and the complaints we hear. Operations and maintenance, a lot of people don't see this. They're continuing to move from a reactive to a proactive maintenance program in order to be more efficient. Good example of that is we have a number of painted poles in, in the city. And quite frankly, they've been neglected. They've been, the paint's peeling off. It doesn't look good. And so we've implemented a, a four-year painting cycle. So we're going to work our way through all of the painted poles every four years. We'll reassess it after the first four years to see if we need to stick to that. But instead of waiting for people to complain, instead of waiting for the poles to look poor, we're actually going to be out there on a, on a regular basis and we're going to, we budget money every year now to make sure we get through that on a four-year cycle. And we have a number of other assets. We're putting plans together in order to do the same thing. We, we're still going to have a number of challenges. We don't have enough money for maintenance. SB 1 was a terrific injection of funding, about $3 million a year for maintenance. Unfortunately, that is going to be challenged, I think, here in the near future. And I just want people to know that it's a critical amount of funding that we use and that other agencies use. And, and all I can say is I, I, I hope it continues. In addition, congestion. We're going to have a, we're going to continue to have a problem with congestion. We're going to do everything we can. We're going to implement every, every tool we can in order to get as much efficiency out of our system. But there are certain large capital projects that need to be built in order to deal with it. First Cammer and also Whitelock 99 needs to be built, really to have a significant impact. That doesn't mean we're not going to do anything. We're going to be out there every day trying to, to deal with the congestion. But those large capital projects are really needed. Speaking of Cammer, we're, it's the, it's the City Council's number one infrastructure priority. So that's in the environmental phase. We're actually not waiting. The $3 million that we believe we're going to get next week from the CTC is going to allow us to reconstruct all the way as far east as what would be the extension of Big Horn. And we're going to continue to work on that segment by segment while also looking for a large grant application to build it. So we have a number of SAICOG grant applications coming up this summer and we're probably going to look at trying to do Big Horn to Bruceville. And continue to work our way west in segments while still looking for that home run, whether it's a Tiger grant or an Infra grant in order to build the whole thing at once. So we're going to tack that on, on, on two tracks in order to get it built. And I think with that, we're going to find our, we're going to find our way working west as fast as we can. So again, I'd like to thank my staff because they did all this. I didn't do it. I get to stand up here and talk about it. And, but I, you know, I can't tell you enough. I've, I've been part of a number of Public Works organizations and the staff you have, that we have here is just terrific. They really are. And with that, I thank you for the proclamation. And if you have to answer any questions, or I can just move on.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Bob, thank you for the
Bob, thank you for the presentation. It's a long list, but it's a great one. And I just want to commend you and your staff for all the work that you've done. These projects take a long time, and, you know, I was glad to see a lot of these come to fruition. SB one, another funding, funding for our carpool lanes on I-5. Are you in contact, I know SAICOG's going down there next week. Are you guys in contact or going down with them?
We've, we've arranged for letters from legislators and calls from legislators. I think that'd probably be more effective than that. But I know that a number of, SAICOG is sending representatives, Caltrans is sending representatives. I believe Connector JPA may be sending a representative to go talk and, and to promote those projects. So I think, on the I-5, I, I would anticipate, since it's such a small award, it's only fifteen million out of a project that's worth roughly three hundred and nineteen million, I would, I would suspect that that would probably be okay. So keep my fingers crossed, though.
Yeah, likewise. Thanks.
Bob, I've got a question for you. You did a pretty good job of summarizing everything. Is there anything like a quick, a quick sheet in which we can hand out to members of the public? What I'm finding is that people are asking about the traffic congestion, what the department or the city that is, is doing about it. So, you know, anything that you have on a, on a quick fact sheet as to the measures in which you're putting in place would be helpful.
Absolutely. We can certainly put something together for, for people. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know.
Member, Detrick.
Bob, thank you for the presentation. You know, you, you had mentioned something that I think a lot of people overlook, that you are the roadways for everybody to move around this city, plus all the other public works-related items. And, you know, between you and the PD, the, the quality of life that is affected, affects every resident of this city, more so than some of the other projects and services that we provide, that both are involved with public safety. So appreciate everything you and your team does. And don't discount, you as being the captain of the team, you, you get to praise them for a great job, but you also got to take the licks when there's tough things going on, too. So thank you for what you do.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? Good. Thank you, sir. All right, next item.
Take us to section four, or item four point five, the Youth Commission's semi-annual update.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Carrie Byerline, Executive Administrative Assistant to the City Manager and Advisor to the Youth Commission. We are concluding another year for the commission, and I'm very proud of this group and the hard work they've put into this term. They've put on several events, not only to serve the teens of Elk Grove, but also for families to enjoy. I'd like to acknowledge the five seniors who are leaving us tonight. Nicole and Calvin have had the great opportunity to be on the commission all four of their high school years, and to see them grow as individuals as well as leaders in this group has been incredible. Tameen and Bobby, we were lucky enough to recruit them from the Summer at City Hall program. They've been very strong leaders for this group. Tameen, Tameen has been our chair this year. And last but not least, Sienna, you've been a great addition to the commission. Thank you for all your ideas and hard work on all of our PowerPoints. I wish we would have had her longer. She's been a great person on the commission. I'll now turn it over to our Chair, Tameen, to start introductions and the presentation.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tameen. I'm the Chair of the Youth Commission. I'd like to also introduce Natalia Romero, our Vice Chair, Calvin Wong, our Secretary, Communications Officer is Tyson Gonzalez, historian is Sienna Bangsa. And our Commissioners are Madeline Bagwell, Bobby Barker, Nicole Dandajwaja, Marion Simana, and Matthew Gemmamoy. Nicole's up.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Nicole. So basically, the Youth Commission is basically...
Nicole, why don't you bring the other mic over closer? Pull it over. There you go.
All right. Great. Hi, I'm Nicole again. And basically, the Elk Grove Youth Commission is a group of ten people and Carrie, and we have had the wonderful opportunity to cover issues that really affect Elk Grove. And basically, we serve as the representation for the youth. And what this really entails is that we really focus on key issues that we find affect the city. And this year, basically, we're going to talk about some of the events that we posted, and a lot of these events cover specific issues that teens face. So, yeah, I'm going to pass it on.
Hi, my name is Marion Simana, and today we're going to be talking about the Summer Retreat, Party on the Palms, the Teen Forum, Shape Your Future, Our Family Fun Day, Stronger Together, and Commission Vacants.
I'm Tyson, and we'll be talking about the Youth Commission Retreat. So basically, the Youth Commission Retreat was taking place August ninth, two thousand seventeen, at a, at a eighty-three-eighty conference room. The building is on the parallel side of the council chambers. There, the newly appointed Youth Commissioners got some opportunity to meet, to meet each of the other members previously. We've, we've interacted in the team-building activities, reviewed city policies, and went over the roles of the, the Elk Grove Youth Commission.
Good evening, council members. My name is Madeline Bagwell, and I'm proud to say that it's my second year on the commission, going on third. The event that I'm going to be fixating on is Party on the Palms, one of our most successful events, and has rapidly increased by the years. It's September sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, from six to nine P.M. It is on a street, and it is for teens only. It includes a DJ, a food truck, social media lounge, foam dance party, game truck, ping-pong, photo booth, vendors, and carnival games, and is one of my personal favorite events.
Hello, I'm Natalia Romero, and I'll be recapping our Teen Forum, which was actually a collaboration with CSD's Teen Action Committee. We advertised it as a way to get community service, but it was actually us reaching out to the teenagers in Elk Grove to think, to see what they thought the issues in the city was, what they thought we could improve on, and what they would like to see us do as part of the Teen Action Committee and the Youth Commission. We had guests, we had a guest speaker talk, and then we broke out into small groups where teens gave their feedback and listed more events they'd like to see geared towards them.
Good evening, council. I'm Bobby. For the third straight year, we've, we hosted the Shape Your Future event, and we held workshops on accounting, college planning, and resume building. And for the third straight year, we've had a high turnout. And this year, we include, we collaborated with the Teen Action Committee at CSD again. And on the tail end of the event, we had a small career fair for students to talk to organizations and their desired fields of interest in the future.
Hello, I'm Sienna, and a new event we had was the Family Fun Day, and this is the first time we ever had an event like this, which, instead of catering only to the youth of Elk Grove, this event was more family-oriented and full of carnival games, music, and food trucks. Being a new event, we were unsure of the outcome of the event. However, we were very pleased to have twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand people attend.
Nice. That's great.
It's me again. So the first event I'd like to talk about is the Stronger Together event. This event has been postponed due to low participant signup, but we hope to reschedule in the fall, when we can try to market the event differently for better results, better turnout results. But then I'd like to talk about the event I came up with, EG Talks. So I thought, you know, we have really smart people in this, in the city, almost like, I believe in, I believe that this is a breeding ground for genius, just like Benjamin Franklin thought the United States was a breeding, breeding ground for genius. We had incredibly talented people in this, in this city, and I thought, what if we had like a TED Talk-style event, where people could just share their passions, and other people could vote and say, all right, I really like this person's idea, let's give them a scholarship or a cash prize or something, so they can move forward with their ideas. And, and so that's where I came up with the concept of Elk Grove Talks. What we, what we're hoping is that we have students sign up and talk about whatever they want. They can talk about historical things that they found interesting, they could talk about something they invented, they could talk about scientific phenomena they noticed. And based off this stuff, we could, you know, come up with a solution, help them in their pursuits for whatever they want. And I think this event has huge potential for growth, enormous, because we can get sponsors to help, and I think we could get a lot more help for this one. And then there's also a service project. We have plans to make blankets for hospitals, or, you know, help out, donate to events, volunteer for events, too. So that's what we have planned for the future.
Good evening, council. I'm Matthew Gemmamoy, and I am the most junior member of the Youth Commission who filled in the vacancy in February. And since we have five seniors that are going out today, there's going to be five new open positions coming up in June, and we're going to advertise those through social media means, and that's how I found it. So we'll be able to find other active and willing students in Elk Grove to fill in those positions.
Hello, I'm Calvin, and I'm one of the five seniors that will be vacating the commission. It's been a long four years since I started as a Commissioner. I remember starting out the same year Carrie started. I had my first annual summer retreat, where I met all these eloquent, confident Commissioners. And I was like, oh, boy, this is going to be way too much public interaction for me. But with every meeting...
Funny, that's how Carrie felt, too.
Indeed. But with every meeting, every time I awkwardly squeaked out, "Come to our event," at school, every time I helped direct these events, I learned how to articulate myself under the entirely self-imposed pressure of fear. And in this way, I discovered that there was no room for fear, that I had to replace my pessimism with my activism. And this is a critical trait in a democracy, where the underlying principle is finding solutions amidst a vast mass of conflicting views. Merely staying passive would accomplish nothing. And I thank the council, my fellow Commissioners, and especially Carrie, for giving me this grand opportunity to strive closer to my ideal self, and for the chance to serve Elk Grove in a way I never would have thought possible. Thank you once again.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I just want to say, I'm thoroughly impressed. I mean, you, you guys have done a number of projects, but I've seen many of you grow into the person you are now, and I'm just happy to see that. Thank you very much.
I also want to echo the sentiments. Congratulations to all the seniors. Calvin, I do remember you when you were first on, too. You have grown a lot. That's the most I've heard you talk all these years. And you, you really, you did a really good job, did a really good job. And Carrie, you obviously did a really good job, too, taking care of all these young men and women. So thank you for your service. Look forward to seeing the rest of you in the coming year.
I'll echo all those sentiments, and very good job on the presentation. It's impressive how much you do. Can I have the graduating seniors? Would you mind raising your hand, just so we can all identify exactly which one of you? Thank you so much for your service. Yeah. Member Detrick.
Yeah, I agree. Seeing, seeing you guys grow through the years, and the public speaking opportunities that you guys have been able to take over, your, whether you're new or old, is phenomenal to see the, how much you have grown in the public speaking arena. And I do have to make a comment with Carrie. Carrie was up here, and I could tell her she was getting choked up, because, you know, she's taken you on like family. And every year, she sees you guys go, but it's, you know, like letting, letting your children or brothers and sisters go to fly. So you guys, awesome to see you guys moving on, and I'd like to hear what kind of, what colleges you guys plan on going to. If each one of you five could just walk up to the microphone and tell us the college you, you're hoping to go to, if you haven't already been accepted.
Also include your major. I'm curious.
Hello. I'll be attending the University of California, Merced, and I'll be majoring in biological sciences.
All right.
Nice, nice.
Hi, I'm going to UC Davis to study biochemistry and molecular biology.
I'll be going to UC Berkeley, and I'm hoping to major in economics or computer science.
Hi, I will be going to Northeastern University in Boston, and I will be majoring in computer science and business.
Oh, wow.
Like Bobby, I'm going to be going to UC Davis, and I'm going to be majoring in computer science.
Excellent.
Well, I have to say, those are great decisions. I'm glad none of you said you're going to become a politician. I know you'll be making real money. Thank you all.
Just proves that you're smarter than we are.
If you're computer science folks in Elk Grove, if you want to come back and start a tech company here in Elk Grove.
So I, I do have one thing to say, and that is, I'm very impressed with the presentation. Aside from going to school and probably extracurricular activities, sports and whatnot, you're able to pull all this together. But the one thing that I would encourage you to do, if you didn't have already, is that maybe before you go off to school, is that you pick up some type of a job that can get you some workforce development skills. I've found that in young people, it's always really nice to have that as you go off to college. That being said, Vice Mayor Sun and I have been able to secure some funding for some young folks to go to work during the summer, and you can earn up to fifteen hundred dollars working in, in the career of your choice. We'll put you into a state job, a city job, and we'll pay you. It's like a real job. You'll have a time sheet you have to fill out, you have forms you have to fill, you have an experience that already. I highly encourage you to contact one of us so that we can get you through the program. It's, it's a really quick summer program job. We'll get you all the skills you need to learn what it's like to work as a young adult. And hopefully, your parents will get you set up in a bank account, learn how to write checks. I still write checks. I think the rest of these guys do online banking, but I carry a checkbook with me every day. But all, all the things that we do on a daily basis when we go to school, it's a skill that you really need to learn at a young age, and I'll, I encourage you to do that. I, I know that it'll help you be successful, not just as young adults, but also as you go to school as well, too.
Great resume builder.
Carrie, you're on.
Mayor Lee, if you'd like to come present awards for the seniors.
All right, Sienna. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Tameen. Congratulations. Robert. Calvin. Congratulations. Last but not least, Nicole. All right, next item.
Take us to section five, Public Comment.
Public Comment. Our first speaker is Deborah Massey.
Hi, I'm Deborah Massey. I'm a resident of Mecca, and I'm here to talk to you about speed bumps on Mecca. I'm representing my community... speed bumps on Mecca, I'm representing my community in the request for speed bumps on our dead end, we have some mitigating circumstances which warrant having them put in, we believe it's a safety hazard not having them in, an accident ready to happen. When the guidelines that were developed for speed bumps were okayed by the city council, our dead end wasn't as large as it is now, Mecca is rather lengthy, over a half a mile long, giving ample space and time for cars to speed up and down, we currently have three cul-de-sacs that fork off Mecca, with a total of 27 houses that either have children in them, or have grandchildren visiting them, the community of Mecca is very interested in having speed bumps put in for the safety of those who walk, run, jog, ride their bikes and skateboard down Mecca, several people walk with their pets and children down Mecca from all around the area, Mecca has no sidewalks, it has no shoulders, and Mecca is not wide enough for two large cars to cross each other without going into the driveway, or onto the lip of the ditch, even though we don't have the 500 necessary for traffic, we have nearly four fifths of that, we are just a dead end after all, the council needs to have a process where mitigating circumstances allow speed bumps to be put in when the overwhelming population, in this case, Mecca, are interested in having them put in, the fire and police departments both have okayed the speed bumps for Mecca, 23 out of the 27 houses are in favor of the speed bumps, and the four that have not signed the petition requesting it are at the end of Mecca, and half of those four, I've been able to talk to their spouses, and they have said that they would have signed it if it wasn't for their spouse, so when does the majority- So when does the majority get to have a say? We have several animals that have been hit, mirrors on cars and fenders that have been hit on Mecca, as people have rushed down this dead end, we are asking for tabletop speed bumps, at least two to four, before someone seriously gets hit, it's not that expensive to be put in, and if it was up to the community, we would be able to get it done, but the way it is now, we want to go on record, that if anyone gets hurt by a car on Mecca, and there are no speed bumps, expect a lawsuit of a large proportion, they will have many people in our community to testify how we've been trying to have these speed bumps put in for a couple of years now, so let's avoid this, let's get those speed bumps put in.
Deborah, there is a process-
Yes, and we've been going through it.
So, once that process, it gets evaluated on priorities, and is brought back to council.
Yeah, and that's what I'm doing now, is bringing it to council, that's what I was told to-
This is what gets brought back by our staff, our evaluation across the city on all of these, so this should, Bob, do you have a timeframe, you're bringing this back for the next review?
Well, I'm familiar with this, I've talked to my staff, one of the minimum criteria for a street to get speed bumps is 500 vehicles per day.
Yes.
And Mecca is just under 400 vehicles per day, so they don't meet the minimum criteria. Now, we have been talking, I've been talking with my traffic engineer and other staff, looking at the possibility of changing the criteria and bringing that forward as an option, you know, in order to address a situation like this, we haven't come to a recommendation yet, so as the program currently exists, Mecca would not qualify for speed bumps, because it just simply doesn't have enough traffic to meet the 500 vehicles per day.
That's why we need to have something under these mitigating circumstances that we live under, where the, clearly, the majority of our community wants to have it put in, and there are extenuating circumstances with all of the foot traffic that we have on our road.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, Ed Owen.
Mayor Lee, city council members, I'm also here about speed bumps on Mecca, again, we've been trying to get those speed bumps in for three or four years now, and with little support from the city, yes, I know we need 500 cars, so maybe I suggest we drive up and down four or five trips a day, to meet that criteria, the other thing that we have, is I've noticed that everyone is getting an overlay on their streets, Matty Road, some of the other ones out in that area, so we'd like to maybe, at the same time we're putting in the tabletop speed bumps, that we could do an overlay and patch and plug all the bad asphalt, some of the neighbors have horse trailers, and the road's been overlaid so much, that when they come out of their driveway with the horse trailer, it almost jumps off of their connector, so we need to really take a look at that, the other issue that just recently came up was, we have a stop sign at the end of Mecca, at Sheldon, so we requested the city to come out and trim the oak trees, or shrubs that are blocking that sign, and they did come out, Arrow is the company, they trim right at the sign, but if you drive down, as soon as you, you should have at least a couple hundred feet visibility to know that stop sign's there, we, as living on Mecca, know it's there, but somebody who goes down Mecca, finds out that Mecca doesn't go through, then they come down about 40, 50 miles an hour, they may not see that stop sign, so I'm hoping that we can get someone out there to trim at least all the overhang, I have photographs of it, if anyone would like to see it, and this is a very critical issue, as far as I'm concerned, then, getting away from Mecca Road, I think with the fact that we no longer have a city manager, and there's tremendous amount of projects going on, that's been going on for a number of months and years, that have the city manager involvement, awarding contracts, and et cetera, I think we should do a moratorium until we can maybe get, select a city manager, and have that city manager give him enough time to familiarize himself with all the issues that are going on, yes, we do have an assistant city manager who's doing a great job, but this is something that's going to involve a tremendous amount of money and projects in the future, so let's consider that, please, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is JT Thompson.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm very excited to officially introduce myself to you, I am JT Thompson, the Executive Director of Visit Elk Grove, we are the official destination marketing organization in Elk Grove, and I wrote a script, because I like to ramble on about tourism, so instead of me rambling on, and since I only have a little more than two and a half minutes, I'll get started here, I've been a resident of Elk Grove since 2001, but while growing up on the south side of Chicago, I never imagined that I would find a community as diverse as where I grew up, but as fate had it, I ended up here, with over 20 years of hospitality and tourism marketing experience, I'm honored and privileged to be able to take the lead on the effort to increase the exposure of Elk Grove and the hotel community that I serve, to individual travelers and groups alike, we have rural roots and a storied history, with a friendly, welcoming, and diverse population, all positive factors when marketing a destination to the world, Visit Elk Grove's mission is to increase overnight stays in Elk Grove through destination development and brand management, it's my job to promote Elk Grove to the outside world, but we can't do it alone, our proximity to world-renowned tourist attractions within a two-hour drive make Elk Grove a perfect hub-and-spoke destination for those wanting to experience everything at Elk Grove, and all Northern California has to offer, our initial branding efforts are almost complete, explore Elk Grove wonderfully unexpected, you're going to be hearing a lot of that in the coming months, it's my job, or, I'm sorry, the recent soft launch of our website, exploreelkrove.com, reflects the true feeling of Elk Grove and its residents, with a warm and welcoming feeling that makes you want to visit, explore, and return, we are also involved in sponsorships of many local city events, and have a plan in place to expand our digital, public relations, and social media presence this summer, our messaging will include engaging stories about the multitude of history, art, dining, nightlife, wildlife, and other attractions that are in our own backyard, we will also be marketing to groups and sports market, to increase the already in high-demand sporting venues, and of course, our Elk Grove hotels, the same six hotels are responsible for bringing in over 2.6 million in transient occupancy tax to the city last year alone, I'm here to grow that number substantially, lastly, I'd like to thank all city officials and staff for being so welcoming and helpful to me during the first couple of months on the job, I look forward to furthering our collaboration to ensure the continued growth of tourism in Elk Grove, thank you again for your time, and please don't hesitate to contact me at any time, if I can answer any questions for you.
Any questions?
Yeah, JT, first of all, I want to say, I saw your presence, or Explore Elk Grove's presence at the Brew Fest, and that's the first time I've ever seen any kind of visitor bureau presence at a festival in Elk Grove, so congratulations on that, number one, number two, I received an email from our council assistant that you had asked her for some dates and times, if you would email me directly, I think it'd be faster for us to just coordinate our schedules-
Will do.
-first letter, last name, at elkgrovecity.org.
Know that one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just welcome aboard, JT, it's a good meeting with you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Looking forward to it.
I think it's like the third or fourth time we talked, and, yeah, I'm really excited, you have some great ideas, you know, I'm excited about some of the possibilities, visitors' bureau, physical location, I think that's something we can all work on, so, you know, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
JT, it's a pleasure meeting you earlier this week, and getting to know you, and look forward to having a great working relationship with you.
Thank you, looking forward to it, too.
I think we're meeting in a couple of days.
Yes, we are.
See you then.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy the rest of you.
All right, next speaker is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Lynn Wheat, I believe you received from the city clerk some pictures I sent ahead, to go along with what I was going to talk about this evening, and what I'm talking about is a meeting that occurred last week, it was at Sacramento LAFCO, and it was a request for reconsideration of the Cammer 99 SOI, and when I spoke against that project, I spoke in detail about a lot of our empty buildings, and do we really need to be considering sprawling out when we have so much vacant within our city, so I just went along Elk Grove Florin to Harbor Point, Elk Grove Boulevard from Elk Grove Florin to Harbor Point, and Bond Road from Elk Grove Florin to Harbor Point, and I had to narrow it down, and for the presentation at LAFCO, I provided them 31 pictures, this was a little too large of a document to send through email for you, but what I want you to pay particular attention to, is in 2013, and just going along the road, there was vacancies, and those vacancies still exist today, so when we talk about not having enough money to take care of our current road maintenance situation, and other projects, when we're spending so much money going outward, instead of focusing inward, I'm just wondering, is this going to be really what's going to sell Elk Grove, and so as you look through those pictures, we see that there's still a lot of infill projects that could be done, and they're weeds, so visitors to our city will be seeing these, because Bond, Laguna, and Elk Grove Boulevard are main thoroughfares through our city, in particular, what caught my attention, is something that's really close to our civic center, and that's the Capital Reserve Project, which was rezoned from commercial to homes and retail, or commercial, and that did not go in, but if you look at the picture, anybody that would get stuck at the signal there, would notice the gated community, and in front of that gated community is a chain-link fence with barbed wire, I just don't think that that's very appealing, and so when we're still trying to work on some architectural standards for our city, and that's not happening yet, that we might consider how things are fenced off, because I really don't believe that that's very inviting, and last but not least, is the last page, which says, "Expanding beyond the urban service boundaries destroys the region's farmlands and creates urban blight, infill vacancies continue," so as you continue your policy of wanting to expand outward, we that live inward are being ignored, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat, seeing that there are no additional speaker, let's go to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I tried to be brief in my presentation, Elk Grove Police Officers were recently trained to administer naloxone, a drug that reverses the effects of an opioid overdose, this drug has a very successful track record of saving lives, in the event that an Elk Grove Police Department officer is the first to respond to reported overdose case, they can administer the drug before medics arrive to increase the chances of survival, Sacramento County Public Health has provided naloxone to the police department, supplies will be available for use by our patrol officers, effective immediately, we have a free workshop about how elections are changing in Sacramento County coming up, Sacramento County is one of five counties in California to implement the Voters' Choice Act, expanding voting opportunities for all residents, Sacramento County Department of Voter Registration, Elections, and local officials have partnered to host a free workshop that discusses these changes tomorrow, May 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Elk Grove City Council chambers, those who are unable to attend the meeting are encouraged to visit the Department of Voter Registration and Elections website, to learn more, at www.elections.saccounty.net, something very exciting everybody's looking forward to, which is the Amgen Tour of California coming to Elk Grove next week on May 17th, women's Stage 1 and the men's Stage 5 races will finish on Big Horn Boulevard, just south of Civic Center Drive, the race will generate full-day road closures on Civic Center Drive from Laguna Springs Drive to Bruceville Road, and Big Horn Boulevard from Lots Parkway to Elk Grove Boulevard, to support the start-finish line and the Lifestyle Festival, temporary closures on other roadways are expected as well, traffic advisory was released earlier this week, and staff is working closely with the School District, Transit Division, and Republic Services, to work through the anticipated impacts of normal daily routine for residents, additional details about the event, detours, transit information, can be found on the city's website, our Public Works Director already mentioned Big Truck Day, that's coming up on May 23rd, from 11:00 to 4:00, we also have another one of our major infrastructure projects that's underway, that will involve some inconvenience to some of our motoring residents, so there's a road closure at the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Sheldon Road, to make way for our new roundabout project, the road closure will begin on Tuesday, May 29th, and will continue through the first week in August, again, this work will improve traffic flow and reduce flooding risk at that intersection, more information is available on our website, as far as our projects, we're continuing to look for ways to fund not only Cammer, but Grant Light Road, and different portions of that, for the Grant Line Moser to Bradshaw portion, JPA, we're making progress on that, JPA is proposing that the city take the lead on this project, in the future, SB1 funds, if awarded, to the JPA be transferred to the city, the council's also aware, we had the groundbreaking for Animal Shelter, that project is moving forward, we're really looking forward to seeing that open next year, we're also working on the art component of that, you should see an agenda item before you at the next city council meeting, and that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? There are no questions? All right, next item is a report from members, Councilman Detrick.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, since we're already running pretty far behind, I went to the Animal Shelter Groundbreaking, Elk Grove Relay for Life, Fit Fest, the End of Watch, Fourth Annual Ball, the Running of the Elk, went to the 19th Annual Public Safety and Community Appreciation Luncheon, and we finished up last weekend with the Western Festival, that's it.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, similarly, I went to a lot of those events, I'll just highlight Spaline Scholarship, had the opportunity to award to the Gunnar Creek High School Student Scholarship, and our Small Business Awards, a chance to recognize our Nonprofit of the Year, Chicks in Crisis, and I think I'll just stop there, thanks.
Okay, Member Hume.
Thank you, Mayor, I also attended the Animal Shelter Groundbreaking, the Capital Southeast Connector Meeting, the only item of note to Elk Grove is the beginnings of negotiation for a funding agreement that will return some Measure A funds that we had swapped over to the JPA, they're now giving them back, so that Elk Grove can be the lead agency on construction of the section from Waterman to Bradshaw, I attended Secog's Regional Futures Forum, I was at the LAFCO meeting that Ms. Wheat referenced earlier, where the request- I was at the LAFCO meeting that Ms. Wheat referenced earlier, where the request for reconsideration was denied. Was at the scholarship dinner for the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation. We handed out 176 scholarships worth a little over $226,000 to graduating seniors. So congratulations to all those recipients. And I'm also proud to announce that our bounty on the Boulevard dinner, or yeah, dinner that will be in June at Old Town Plaza is sold out. So over 300 attendees. That's a great thing. I also attended the Small Business Awards to support Chicks in Crisis. I attended the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, held a press conference at the Sacramento Valley Station in order to welcome in the first express commuter train, a new expanded San Joaquin's service that now you can leave Fresno a little after 5:00 in the morning and arrive in Sacramento before 8:00 in the morning. And then return home, you'd be home in time to have dinner with the family. And then had Regional Sanitation Board meeting this morning, and Audit Committee meeting this afternoon. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Member Wayne?
Thank you, sir. I will be brief as well. I don't want to repeat many of the community events that I attended the past two weeks. I do want to highlight that I want to thank the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Hume in joining me and doing our little country line dance at the Western Festival Parade. That was a lot of fun. I'm hoping to encourage them, because in Austin, Texas, they open up their council meeting with live music that hopefully can encourage the council to open up our council meetings with some type of a performance here.
Baby steps, baby steps. Great choreography, though, there.
I am.
The public that was kind of jealous, so they're yelling out Brown Act violation.
I want to, I know Mr. Berman touched up on this already, which was the Voters' Choice Act event that will happen tomorrow night here, and that is in partnership with Senator Pan, Assemblymember Cooper, and then the Secretary of the State, Alex Padilla, and that we will also have folks to do translation in Chinese, Vietnamese, Mong, and Spanish, because our community here is so diverse. We have quite a few, almost about 50 RSVPs. This is the only educational forum that will happen here in Elk Grove, and it took a lot of planning. I want to thank the city's staff, especially Carrie and Carolyn, for helping me put that together. So if you're listening out there, I hope you are able to make it, because there are some changes that are happening, and we're the first county to take on these changes. And ballots are being mailed out already, if you haven't already received it. That's all I have, sir.
Excellent, thank you. A number of events. Let me see. Attended Superhero Family Fast Market in 99. Attended the Relay for Life, Beats on the Boulevard, Running of the Elk, Groundbreaking of the Animal Shelter. Attended another Court of Honor for one of our Eagle Scouts. History Day at Monterey Trail, Project Ride, Big Day of Giving, Elk Grove Regional Scholarship. Also, attended lacrosse with the Elk Grove Gladiators, which I thought was, you know, very interesting, because I certainly haven't seen any lacrosse games before, but seeing that in Elk Grove kind of sparked an interest. Hopefully, that's something that grows in stronger interest within Elk Grove, and hopefully I can see some of the schools having this sport there. Let me see. Oh, of course, how could I forget? The Friendship Force Annual Conference was brought to Elk Grove and participated in a presented resolution. And of course, Western Festival, which was certainly the highlight of the past weekend. And watching the members dance, you know, made me envious that I should be a better dancer as well. So thank you very much. You know, one thing I'd like to, you know, bring to the council's attention, and I'd like to ask for consensus is, you know, I've been working with students in juvenile hall a while, and one of the, you know, common issues that I always see is the quest for jobs and job training. And I know that Councilmember Wayne, you're big on this, certainly with your agency and the work that you have done. My feeling is this might be a good opportunity to start reviewing and taking an opportunity to ask and direct staff to bring back to council a community workforce training agreement. And my thought here, the reason why this is important is, in talking with many of these young people, one of the quickest way to stop crime is really provide them with job opportunities. So that's what, you know, really caused me to have this, you know, moment to bring this forward to council. Specifically, you know, obviously I have an interest in prevailing wage jobs. One of the things I like to really push is try to find ways in which we can invest our tax dollars locally. Part of that, you know, is provide local apprenticeship for our students. We can't just assume that students are going to go directly to college. I think we're very fortunate in Elk Grove that we have a lot of high performers, and oftentimes we have these students that are top 20, that are in like 4.5 GPA. But I have an interest, obviously, for those students who may not want to go to college directly, and, you know, apprenticeship program, particularly apprenticeship programs that are a combination of management and also line workers joining together to develop something where everyone can agree. I think the other thing that does come to mind is, you know, quality of work and what my last point of it is, I'd like to request that staff look at, you know, contracts at RFP that are about $500,000 and above. So what I'm looking for, so I'm looking for a consensus on this council to bring this item back with a report from staff so that we can discuss it.
So I'd like to maybe take this a little step further and maybe have it as a discussion at the next council meeting to talk about what this looks like, because as you know, this is what I do. I do this every day for work, and I agree with you that our young folks, especially the ones that are in juvenile hall, they need something to latch into, because that door is going to continue to be revolving if we don't find something to do. I understand that very well. I just want to make sure that we have what it takes. Not say we don't have what it takes to do it here, but I want to make sure that before we step in and do this, this is a lot of, this is a lot of work. It's really hard.
Yeah.
And I think we need a discussion about it before we jump into it.
Right, no, very well said, yeah.
I, you know, I think it's a great idea. I believe in the cause. I think it's just, it's more than just directing staff to do this, and if it is, I'd like to be on board, involved in this, because I've seen cities take on things like this, and it not goes so well. And it not goes so well not only for the city and the participant, but also the employers, the agencies that take this on, and it just falls apart. And I'd hate for our city to take on something and that happens. So one, I'd like to maybe bring this back for a discussion at the next council meeting and show this out a little bit further, or?
Yeah, I think, I think the important part is we start exploring this, right? I mean, and asking and directing staff specifically to speak with interested stakeholders, interested stakeholders. I think that's real important, you know, to have that discussion. Member Dedrick?
I like the concept, but I just don't know how, if this is really a city function. If you look at the core purpose of what the city of Elk Grove does is, you know, public works, public safety, this seems like it's something that's channeled more to the school district. And I could see supporting the school district in this effort and jointly working with it. But I don't really see how this pertains to what our core business is.
Well, I think what's important is to take that leadership role, right? And I think that we're in a great position to be the leader and to show the rest of this region, certainly the school district, whatever body, that we're willing to make that stand, because, you know, investing into our children's future is important. And it's not just juvenile hall students. There are a number of students that graduate from our high schools that, you know, pause for a little moment and try to figure out, what is it that I really want to do? And I think that's a perfect opportunity to grab them and say, you know, I mean, go into this apprenticeship program, learn a trade, learn something, and you may want to go to college later on. But where we're at right now is we don't, if we don't have that conversation, we're not going to be able to move in that direction.
You're preaching to choir. I've served three apprenticeships. So I get it, but I still don't think it's a city function. I think it's a more of a school district function. That's where the kids are at. That's where you're going to reach them. That's where we can move them forward.
Members?
I'm still trying to wrap my head around what you're actually asking for, because you mentioned about three things, apprenticeship program, prevailing wage, the contracting amounts.
Buffalo.
What is it? And so I think I would be in favor, because I'm worried that we're maybe even overstepping our bounds at this point, as far as discussing the merits of this item. I'd be in favor of Councilmember Wayne's request to bring this back for full discussion.
I'd be on board with that. I mean, I think, I agree with Councilman Hume. I think you brought up a lot of different topics for discussion, and I think they all have merit. So let's do that for the next round.
Well, my, you know, obviously my thought is providing a little bit more additional guidance for staff, as opposed to just bringing back to discussion, you know, to provide a little bit more of a skeleton. And obviously, fleshing that particular skeleton would involve multiple stakeholders, and then the community, staff, and members of the council as well. So that's my thought.
I think that's all we're prepared to do at this time.
Yeah. Okay. So what am I hearing? I hear from one council member. Is that what?
For discussion, right? Bringing it back for a more deeper discussion. And I would be more than happy to work with you and get involved with the staff and kind of educate on what youth workforce development programs are out there in our region. So you talked about young people that are not?
Well, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. My particular interest is obviously prevailing jobs. And there are certain things that trigger that, but I think it's important for us to make that leadership stand. You know, the second part of it is, from a philosophical standpoint, trying to invest our local dollars within our local economy. But more importantly, to look at apprenticeship program and how we can actually meet the needs of the workforce in the, you know, upcoming years. But specifically, I have an interest in making sure that we have quality projects when we do kick out, you know, some of these capital improvement projects in our city. And that's the reason why I thought of the $500,000. It's just, it's a number in which I just feel comfortable with, you know? It can certainly move back and forth, but I think if we provide this kind of guidance to staff, we can have a little bit more meat when it does come back.
We already had this discussion relative to the dollar amount. I think it was $2 million. Is $2 million, Bob, is where we go to another level of review on our public works projects?
I'd like to look to the city attorney. I'm getting really uncomfortable that we're discussing an item that's not been adjudicated.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Yeah, I think we are getting a little far afield of what's proper for bringing, giving direction to staff. So we've heard a lot of different things here, and I think we're starting to get into the substantive discussion. My recommendation is with Councilmember Humes and the others of, why don't we take what we've heard? We'll bring this back for a broader discussion. We'll agendize it so we can have a fuller discussion, involve the public, and move forward from there. And I think we can do that at the next meeting, if that's right with the council.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's good. All right, thank you. All right. Let me see, next item.
Take us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 8.11.
All right, 8.11 has been pulled.
The remainder of consent.
Got a motion, remain of consent, got a second, on the favor?
Aye.
Close, extension? All right. 8.11.
If I can roll back real quick, we did have a number of individuals signed up for 8.11, but I do have a speaker signed up for Item 812, which is Lynn Wheat on the list.
Okay.
Apologies.
Sorry about that. Ms. Wheat?
812 was an item that was a receive and file, but we can call Ms. Wheat, and she can make comments on Item 812.
I wanted this pulled for conversation, because it talks about some of the policies that you've had, and the staff implementing those policies under the direction of our city manager. And I think that there was some good leadership, and you've, they've finished several, and several that are ongoing, they're making some progress. So when we just file it, when we've had meetings on this and we don't have any discussion, I don't think it allows the public to really understand what you've done, and how you've implemented those policies, and how the staff has implemented those policies, and the money spent towards that. So this is something positive going on, and I think it needs to be shared more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And let's go with 8.11, folks who are signed up to speak. First is Charlie Zamora.
So excited to be here and speak with you guys. My name's Charlie Zamora. I'm a Homegrown Elk Grove product. In 2010, I opened my gym when I was 21 years old. We've been operating that business now eight years plus, and having a great time with it. Grew up here in Elk Grove, like I mentioned. Went to Kerr, Elk Grove High School, played four sports, and continued my fitness journey in helping the citizens of Elk Grove and the youth of Elk Grove do amazing things. I've spoke with all of you independently, because I feel that some of those conversations I need to have might not be the best to speak about here. Those are my concerns. So I want to take the route of optimism, and I want to explain to you why, if you choose our gym, Warriors Health and Fitness, we can take your RFP for Health and Wellness Director to a whole nother level. So all my team asks is you hire the most qualified vendor to perform this job. Tonight, we are supposed to be the recommendation in the staff report to receive this job. Quote, "April 6, 2018. Thank you for your willingness to negotiate, and we look forward to building our wellness program with Warriors pending city council approval on May 9, 2018. Jackie Langberg, HR Resource Management." April 26, 2018, my wife follows up with an email that she received where she was told the city has decided to go against the RFP process, the committee's four to five decision in our favor, and to extend the current vendor for six months at a cost of $40,000. May 4, 2018, the staff report came out. Staff report states that the reason for the late involvement of the PMO, PMA, and the extension of the contract is to find ways to increase law enforcement's participation, maximize the benefits for funds expended for the program. Staff report actually also states, "The contracting of a wellness vendor is not a required labor management negotiable item." Now, if we're looking at what we're trying to do here, we're trying to increase participation from PD and city workers, and we're trying to get them healthy. My gym is fully capable of that, and in your staff report, they mention that we performed in a superior manner, and we have won every process along the way. All I ask is that we can meet your needs, and that you would look to us to be able to help you. Warriors Fitness has the ability to increase law enforcement participation, maximize the benefit for funds, expand the program, excuse me, expand the program. Sorry, I'm looking through my notes here. Oh, that's really easy. Be positive. We can build this program. We can do this. We're a team of winners. Everything I've ever done, I've won at, because I'm aggressive, and I fight, and I fight for exactly what's right. I know I can grow this program with my wife, with her as the lead, and me supporting her on the backend, helping develop the classes and the marketing. We can offer the best product for your city, and we know specifically that we have evidence of doing that, and we have people here speaking tonight to back our claims. All I'd ask is you give us the chance, give my wife the chance, also to make history in Elk Grove, to be the first woman to be the director of health and wellness for you guys. And I'm open for questions on if, I'm open for questions if you have any questions for me on how we're going to do this.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Charlie, as you mentioned, you and I spoke over the phone, and I won't get into the details of the process, because you just laid a little bit of it out there, and I'll discuss it later when we're having council deliberations on this item. But I just want to ask you, and I'm really kind of putting you on the spot for the confidence that you just displayed. This was an idea that I came up with today, and I've not shared it with my colleagues, so I don't even know that it has legs. But if we were to offer you a one-year contract with a two-year extension, and in that first year, you work with the PD to grow the program, to get those numbers up, and also to prove your capabilities, and then get the two-year extension after that, would that be something you'd be willing to enter into? Kind of a trial period?
As a married man, I've learned not to speak without asking my wife, and she'll be speaking after me. So what I will tell you is this, if given the opportunity, whether it was six months, two years, three years, or for the rest of it, we can do this, we'll provide you the best program, and I'm confident in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. Charlie, good to meet you in person. We talked a little bit. I just curious to your point about getting others to sign up. What, why do you think you would be more successful than, you know, the other program that's going on right now in terms of how are you going to get more people to all of a sudden to join?
Sir, I'm a humble guy, but in this situation, I do have to talk about myself. I am one of the biggest experts in the field when it comes to health and fitness. I've coached at the Olympic Trials for Olympic Weightlifting, for powerlifting, for CrossFit, for anything fitness-related. I've ran events all over the country where I took people and had to get them into groups to participate in large scales and to build programs. I built an international company within the last four years, and I sold it just to have roots back in my own city to find things like this to help out. And so how are we going to be able to get PD involved? It's by getting a comprehensive program that can get results, and that's going to be done by working with the PD, asking what their true needs are, and instead of just asking them, implying ways to act upon that, and then get constant feedback back and forth. We need to be involved in their lives. We need to talk to these people. We need to be friends with them. We need to understand where they're coming from. I also have insight on different aspects of working with police. When, he's the 45th Chief of Police of Sacramento, it's Daniel Hahn. Daniel Hahn was also one of my, excuse me, my acknowledgements for, or me and my wife getting this job. When I spoke with Daniel Hahn about this, and he acknowledged that, prior to him becoming the Chief of Sacramento, I worked with him at our pal, and I helped with him create a citywide event for Roseville and to get more people involved. I have a lot of experience, not only working with PD, but high levels of PD, and my biggest, actually, this is a very great question, my biggest gift is in getting people together and building things. My gym hasn't been around for eight years because we're not good. It hasn't grown every year because we're not good. I haven't increased my membership every year because we're not good. We are a family-owned company. It's me and my wife, my little son Miles, he's one-years-old. We call him the champ. And we are here, we're involved, and we want to be a part of this community. We want to make this change. And to be honest with you, our livelihood doesn't depend on this. We're doing this because we love our city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I do have a question. This is more on the correspondence. I know you provided me with a number of documents. I want to ask you, was there any indication that you've already gotten it, gotten the contract?
Yes, sir. And so, from where we stand, me and my wife and our company, we received a phone call, or my wife received a phone call from Julie Rucker, and she was confirming that we need to call her back for information for this RFP process. After we got this phone call about the RFP process, my wife got off late that night. She was working until 8:00 at the gym. She called the next morning. The call was to confirm that we had won the request proposal, which is what the city had set out to request this job. And as that proposal came out, we applied for it, and we won that process. And that's what I stated in my opening statements. I know I kind of read through it fast, but we also, and this is, all of it's available on the stuff that I submitted, but I took the bottom portion of that email. The bottom portion of the email, like I said before, says, "Thank you for your willingness to negotiate, and we look forward to building our wellness program with Warriors pending City Council approval on May 9." And that's why I started my conversation by saying, "All I want you to do, please, is move forward with the process that the city had set out to obtain this, that HR vetted, that we won. When we went to an onsite and performed in front of your wellness committee, we gained four out of the five votes. That's three PD and two city people." Those people are smart, and they understand that they want the best product for their city. So, when they were asked to give that information of who they, who they thought, that's why we moved forward and said, "Here we go." And in that same email on April 6, there was asking to agreement of terms. The agreement of terms was a three-year contract at a set amount of price. And if you mention, in that email that I just read, it says, "Thank you for negotiating with us. We've actually made modifications to our original RFP to allow city workers to have free access to our gym. We've also decreased our asking price, and we've also found ways to work with the city." In this entire process, all I want you to know, and this is what I've expressed to you on emails and phone calls, is through this process, I've never made anything public. The first thing I did was, after we found this information, we called the city manager. Now, I understand why I didn't get a phone call back, unfortunately. The next step, I started calling my council members. I started emailing them. And I'm very proud to say that as a citizen of Elk Grove, I called all of you, and you called all of me, you called me back. We had conversations. You know my pain points. You know the things I don't want to bring up here because it's not the time, it's not the place. So, with a level of optimism, I just want to let you know, I, me and my wife and our company have taken every step to take the high road and what the city would request of someone to have this position, which is a person of integrity and love for their city.
Where am I getting with this is, you know, after that communication, correct me if I'm wrong, are there any efforts that you made and relied on that?
Relying on if that was...
On the communication, either it would be the phone call, the email, what have you?
That that was what's going to happen tonight?
No, no, no. My question to you is, did you take any, did you make any efforts in relying on the communication, communication you've had with the city personnel?
Oh, yes, sir. We... Yes, sir. Excuse me for interrupting you. Yeah. We contacted our entire team. We contacted HR. We already reserved, I believe it would be this room, I don't know, I think it's this room, to do our first program, and we're bringing in Dr. Tomlin, who's one of the experts on weight loss. And it was going to, we were going to do all these other things. He's already contacted, we already spoke with Watify, which is a system the city asked for us to get because that's what the current PD's using, that we don't currently use, but we were going to invest into. And that wasn't in our actual bid for proposal. We were going to take, like our company, and invest into that because of how much we wanted to work with a company here. We just had hours of planning, setting up different events. We were doing an internal marketing campaign. Because when we do something, we build for it, and as soon as we knew that we had it, we knew that we need to come May 9. So, when you guys said, "Hey," and, ma'am, you say, "Hey, this is what's happening, we're ready to go, and we're ready to make a change instantly." So, yes, we've taken all of those steps. We've already been working on this thing diligently, and that's why we've had, unfortunately for you guys, a lot of email conversations, phone conversations. But I hope you'd see too, that you're also contacted today by people in different elements of sport from all over the country that were saying that we are also qualified for this job.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead. Please.
We spoke as well to Mr. Zamora, and I just, so one of the things I've learned is that it's not only just our sworn officers that are going to be using this, but also our city staff as well, too, administration, city staff. And so, the workouts and the plans, I don't work out, I don't go to the gym at all. So, I'm sorry if I've got the wrong lingo, but the plans are going to be...
I could help you out.
The plans are going to be different based off of not just the fact that you're a sworn officer, if you work in the office, but also age. Will you be crafting different workouts for the different, you know, city staff that will be using the facility?
Oh, yes, ma'am. And that was where I think that RFP stands out over everyone else's. The staff report actually had, came out, and so all I'm doing is talking about information that already exists. And so, in the staff report, I have it cited here, and it says that currently, you have a 62% non-participation rate and that 90% of the current people that are employed by the city want variety of classes. 53% of that group want educational help on nutrition. We had a doctor scheduled, and if you look at everything else, 90% want a variety of classes. Where are they basing this information off of? My question is, is what more do you need to learn in six months that you haven't already learned in the last three years? Can we apply different techniques to help the city side? Yeah. We're going to bring in Vinyasa Yoga. We're going to bring in Pilates. We're bringing in five staff to be able to fit the city's needs. So, if you look at the city and how it's broken down, you actually have, and I'm getting excited, you have 65% of PD, right? 35% of city. Currently, to my knowledge, there's no, and via conversations with the LS committee, there is no classes consistently happening on the city side. So, why are we neglecting the quote-unquote "city surfers," which I've been told that's what they're called, so I hope that's okay? Why are we neglecting those women or men over there on that side? I know the contract has stipulations that we need to be in some form of a contract to make sure that PD is getting what they need out of this contract right for their, for the health and wellness. But at the same time, like you're saying, if this is something that's open city-wide, why is 35% of this group being marginalized currently and don't have programs for them? On staff, we're going to have one, three women and two guys. We're actually a heavily a woman program. Now, to be honest with you, any guy that wants to try to beat my wife or other coach in a workout, they can go for it, but I don't think they'll be successful because she's been beating me in workouts for the last two years.
It's because she's a beast.
No wonder you, no wonder you seek her opinion before committing to anything.
But do you see her arm? She's got a cutoff on. I don't want to mess with her. I hope I, I hope I answered your question, and we do have a very, I mean, it's in our RFP. If you just take the time to look through that again, and you want to see, like I said, I think our edge is because we had a variety of classes to offer, which is what 90% of these people want. 53% wanted educational information. We're bringing in doctors. On top of this, I've worked in a contract to make sure, or I'm working with a group that we're kind of working with, that they're going to bring an in-body machine to do body fat testing. An in-body machine, just to own one of those is eight grand. We have three that we have access to. So, if you want to say, "Hey, our goal is to be able to see and track results." So, why are we paying these people this amount of money? Right? It's to have results. We're going to have very high-tech performance items where we can measure that, and if they, if they come back, we want to measure that again, we can actually prove it physically and through science that there is a change. And for all of you that are up here, and you want to see that difference, we have the capability of doing it. It's not subjective, and it's not, "Oh, you lifted more today." I don't care how heavy you lift, if when you're trying to arrest somebody, your back goes out because it's blown out. What I care about is that you can sustain the fight and help our city streets and be safe.
I may have missed it in the report or in the documents you submitted, but how did you discover the votes of the committee?
I think it was released.
Was it?
Yes.
It's in the RFP, I believe.
Was it? Okay.
I mean, in the staff report.
Staff report. Most of all, my information, sir, was from the staff report. I didn't fare well in school, but I learned now that I need to check things out before I speak.
Yeah, well said. All right. Any other questions?
I'll save my comments for our deliberation.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you for all of you, and thank you for listening to me, and for anyone that's watching or is going on. Every one of these city council members, the mayor, vice mayor, all these council members, they've taken the time to speak with me, and I appreciate that, and it means a lot, not only as a business owner, as a citizen, but also as a father in this community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Misha Zamora.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. In regards to growing police officer participation, we find that to be one of our strengths. We built our business organically from the ground up with zero loans. We built a successful international company, Caffeine and Kilos, and sold it in order to devote ourselves to our gym and focus on the relationships we've built within the city. We have built trust and contracted with the biggest gymnastics center in California located here in our hometown, Elk Grove, Elevate Gymnastics Academy. We have built trust and contracted with one of the largest volleyball clubs in Elk Grove for several years, force volleyball, along with multiple sports teams in our city. My plan for my team and myself was to be present and available. I had already adjusted my schedule and stated in my RFP that I will be onsite at least three hours a week for all employees to engage with. I want to walk around the police department every week and engage with employees, invite them to workouts, et cetera. I already had a doctor come. He was set to come in, and this room was already booked with Julie. She and I were both aware that I was going to begin an internal marketing campaign to get everyone excited and to participate. This was already set upon signing tonight before everything was suddenly pulled from me. The 62% of all employees not participating currently need more encouragement. As a health and fitness coordinator, I plan for many changes. For example, I plan to attend police officer briefings to build relationships and share the various program options, be available and present, build a social media platform in order to grow health and fitness community amongst all employees, survey employees twice a month to get honest feedback where they would like to see change in our program and make adjustments as needed. At my gym, I gather my coaches together at least once a month to all train and work out together, to build our team and bond. My thoughts with the police department were somehow to host a one-hour workout that everyone could schedule ahead of time. This way, from all the various shifts, everyone can come together and build camaraderie. Participation builds when people feel safe and are having fun. My trainers have agreed to stay off their cellphones while coaching city classes unless recording for that social media platform. In my professional opinion, using your cellphones for personal usage is negligence as your eyes are not paying attention to the members in class. This is dangerous and not safe. My team and I also want to build participation through leadership by joining employees and their fitness initiatives. For example, with my gym, we recently built a team, and I ran my first half marathon running, doing the running of the elk, what, two weeks ago? I'm still sore. I plan on doing the same with the employees of the city of Elk Grove. I will see through these events, build them, and participate right next to them by their side. These were just a few of my ideas when I was accepted through the RFP process. I see a lot of value in increasing police participation. While we truly look forward to partnering with all city employees, we realize our police officers are a priority due to their line of work and the physicality of their jobs within our community. Our goal is to ensure we have fit officers, both mentally and physically, that can go out and work with the community safely. The healthier our officers are, the better they are for our community and our community's safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Misha, can, I'll ask you the same question that I asked Charlie is, would you be willing to agree to a shorter contract term as a trial period and then with an extension to bifurcate it, to have an extension to get you to the full three years?
Yes.
Okay. I see there's a lot of speakers signed up, and I'm assuming they're in support of Warriors. Is there anyone signed up to speak on behalf of the other Elk Grove Strength and Conditioning?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Next speaker is Daniel Frank.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. A lot of things have been said this evening about our youth. I've been a coach for wrestling for 17 years now, 13 years with Joseph Kerr Middle School. And one of the things that I noticed, I've been with Warriors now for six years, working out there. My family works out there. My wife works out there. She's also gotten pretty strong in the last few years. One of the things that I've been most impressed by with Charlie and with Misha and the rest of the coaching staff is the fact that they've been able to take different workouts for different types of people. That was one of the things you mentioned earlier. Another thing that was mentioned was our youth. Again, being a coach in this community, I didn't grow up in Elk Grove, but I have fallen in love with this community, with this city. That is my school. I also am partnered very highly with Elk Grove High School. My oldest son wrestles there. He's a state qualifier this past season. A lot of these things have been done and accomplished by working with Charlie and Misha at Warriors. My youngest son, who is 12 now, is a two-time national qualifier for weightlifting as well. Again, my wife has competed in a couple of different events with Warriors. And one of the things that I'd like to say about this group, about this company, is that it is based on what we do here in our city. When the company was off of Elk Grove floor and right down the street from the high school, many kids go down, up and down that street every day. I cannot tell you how many times I watched Charlie talk to different kids, different adults that come out of the different stores that are there, people that come and look into Warriors, looking to find something to better themselves. I've also, you know, as I mentioned, been one of those people that has been bettered by this because you have people that care about people, the people of this city. And that's the, again, one of the things I've been most impressed with this company. It would be, I can't even explain to you how huge it would be for the city to have this company represented. And in terms of participation, every year, I have 100 wrestlers, anywhere to 100 to 130 wrestlers. wrestlers. And we have summer programs every year for those kids to come out after school ends. They go three times a week and it's either Charlie or Misha or one of the staff members that are there. And they're changing those workouts to benefit those kids. May not be the hardest, may not be the heaviest, but those kids are in there every day. And that was our motto from the first day I met Charlie Zamora, just walk in the gym. That's it. So, thank you very much, appreciate it. And that's the right gym for you to choose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Tyler Zender.
Good evening, mayor, oh, sorry, vice mayor and council members. My name is Tyler Zender and I'm speaking in opposition of item 811. I've been a schoolteacher in Elk Grove for the past 11 years. I currently teach physical education at Markoff Elementary. Health and wellness has forever been a part of my life. The Zenders and the Zamoras have had a long history of friendship as well as a business relationship.
Tyler?
If you move back a little bit.
Could you back off the mic just a hair? It's reverberating.
Okay. I've known Charlie since we were kids playing high school sports. Sports and fitness have been the foundation of our friendship since the beginning. About six years ago, I walked into one of Charlie and Misha's first locations of Warriors Health and Fitness for my first workout. The passion Charlie and Misha had back then for health and fitness was apparent then and it's even more apparent now. Fast forward to today and they have grown their business, both in the size of their space they now occupy and the number of members that fills it, fill its walls. In addition to building a successful hometown business in Elk Grove, Charlie founded and helped to cultivate Caffeine and Kilos, one of the fastest-growing international brands in fitness. Charlie since has sold his stake in the company in order to be there for his son Miles as well as to continue bringing health and wellness to the youth and community of Elk Grove through Warriors Health and Fitness. There's no doubt in my mind that Warriors and the team they have built will grow the participation of the EGPD and city employees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Ramsey Nijem.
This is a good space here? Okay. So I am Ramsey Nijem and I'm speaking in opposition of agenda item 811. I'm a head strength and conditioning coach for Sacramento Kings. I'm also a doctor of science candidate with a focus in health sciences, health promotion and wellness. Needless to say, I am passionate about fitness and health and it's rare for me to run into individuals in general, but especially a couple that's as passionate as I am, the Zamoras certainly are. So, like, some of this may be redundant, but I think it's important for me, just to restate it, because I think it's important for, as someone that's kind of in the fitness community, for, I think, the city of Elk Grove to understand the value that the Zamoras actually have. So, the Zamoras opened their gym doors nearly a decade ago and since have grown Warriors' Health and Fitness into a staple of the community. While doing so, the Zamoras founded and grew Caffeine and Kilos into one of the most recognizable and fastest-growing brands in fitness. Just over a year ago, the Zamoras decided to walk away from Caffeine and Kilos to spend more time together as a family, raising their son and impacting the community of Elk Grove. Charlie and Misha Zamora continue to do great things in the community and Elk Grove is certainly fortunate to have them. While the decision award the Zamoras, the city health and fitness coordinator position is ultimately yours, council, the objective truth is really clear here, which is, this is a family that practices what they preach, that is beyond qualified, so, to your question earlier about, you know, changing workout programs, anyone can do that. That's, that's not hard to do, right? Practicing what you preach and really committing to a, to a community to do those things is what they bring value, in my opinion. So without hesitation and with overwhelming confidence, I believe the Zamoras would elevate Elk Grove's current city health and fitness program. Ultimately, the city council has to make a business decision for the city and the best return on the taxpayer's investment is to award the Zamoras this contract. To finish, I'd like to say that I'm honored to speak on their behalf. While only a few of us are here speaking today, the Zamoras could have, could have had hundreds of people come up here. So really, I think it's saving people's time for just three of us to do so. So with that said, I thank you for your time and your service. If there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions? Nope. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Nick Detrick.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Nick Detrick. I'm a doctor of physical therapy with a passion for working with tactical athletes, but as members of our military, police and fire departments. The benefits of having a health and wellness program like this are obvious. One of the sayings I like to use in my practice is movement is medicine. So I love the fact that programs like this are around. I want to be clear that I'm here tonight as a neutral party, neither opposed or supporting this agenda. What I'm here to offer is a professional view for moving forward, especially given council member Hume's suggestion of a year trial. My suggestion for the city and police department specifically is to develop some sort of physical fitness assessment for its employees, a standardized assessment, offer incentives for maintaining higher levels of health and begin more closely tracking things like injury rates and cost of healthcare. By developing a program like this, you can provide, then provide whichever of these potential candidates with a clear goal to work towards and most importantly, ensure that we're giving the highest quality care to our policemen and women. Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you. And Corey McGuire is our last speaker.
Mayor, vice mayor, council. I am Corey McGuire, currently running the wellness program, Elk Grove Strength and Conditioning with the city of Elk Grove. From my understanding, we were here tonight to, for an amendment to extend the contract while the city reviewed the current wellness program or what they were looking for in the wellness program, which I completely support. If they felt that they need, needed the time to look over the program more, there was reasons. Throughout this process, we stuck by our bid. We provided what we were offering, Watify, which was already provided for the city, yoga, multiple programming, rehab for officers, nutrition, things that were already in our program that were then, it sounds from listening to the previous speakers, were added to our bid after the RFP process. So, one thing that is not mentioned in here is a employee petition. When the Warriors was announced as the winner of the contract, the police officers started a public petition. Currently, that petition is over 128 people. I brought the last printout, if you guys would like to see that, of people who have signed that petition. Between that, the surveys of the employees, the committee's decision, there was conflicting interest. So that I understand, from my understanding, that is why the city asked for more time. And in that time, still provide the police officers and the city employees with a wellness program. We have offered to help them with any of that information they might need to be, you know, might want to pursue as far as what they're looking for, what you guys are looking for, for a wellness program. That may differ from what we are doing currently. No matter what, the end of the day, we will support the police officers and their wellness and any city employee who is looking to improve upon their health. This is not, I'm not coming up here to sell you on what we can do or what we might do. We have done the things that are already been said that they are going to offer. Like, again, the systems like Watify, which is the tracking system of their performance, the yoga classes, bringing in nutritionists, having doctors talk to participants, all that has been provided. There does need to be a bigger, a bigger view of how do we get more participants overall, but in the time that we have had that contract, in the three years, there has been steady growth. And those who started participating continue to participate. It's not give it a try and then they're out of there. It's come in, be brought into the family of our, that is our wellness program and they stay. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Corey. Any questions?
Yep.
Go ahead, vice mayor.
Corey, so, three years, and then we had about 38, I think, officers participating in your program?
No, that, I'm not sure where those numbers, and on average, on average, we have more than 60 employees just participating in the workout program. That's not including fitness challenges, one-on-one consultations, none of that, it is tracked, but they're just tracked as a number. And when, in reality, we are constantly in contact with employees. So that, I'm not even sure where that number came from. The very first month we ever had, we had the contract, day one, we had over 30 participants. And from there, we continued to grow at a high of over 80, and that's just the workout program. Again, just the working out, that has nothing to do with all the other aspects of our program itself. So it has, and it has, again, grown in that three years steadily.
Maybe we can hear from staff later about the, where the survey results came from.
I'll provide any data you guys are, I mean, I did the management when they asked. So if there's any data that you guys would like from us, I could tell you who was working out that, that month, if you give me the time to look it up through our system. So.
So do you have, you have numbers with you with, right now about?
I provided a, to the management, a full, they picked a month out of random and I provided them.
Oh, the month, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Member Wen.
Sorry, you said that you had over 100 city employees that go to?
I believe in that month, if you count the, the people that were just, that were working out versus who was doing only, like, fitness competi, like, with the walk-in challenges or some of the quarterly challenges that we, so in that month, I believe there was over 100 participants.
Just, just over that month. I'm looking at the, the survey and the data here and where there was 166, 166 employees that participated in it, and then there's a 62% that do not participate in the current wellness program due to schedules, location and types of workout.
Now, we have provided multiple, we've done classes here, any, as far as facility, a lot of times it would need approval from management according to HR and then they wouldn't, we wouldn't get that approval or we'd get told, continue doing what you're doing, it's working. So based on our feedback, we were doing our job from your HR department.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Right. There are no additional speakers, but there is a question from Member Hume.
Thank you. Do I direct the question to you, Carrick, or Jackie, to you? So I'm curious, in the RFP process, the staff report, it says the RFP sought a vendor who could best meet the city's needs, but didn't necessarily call out what those needs were. Did we ask for a program that was substantially similar or a marked change in what we're currently offering?
I would say it's substantially similar to, to what we're currently doing.
Okay. And this was a best value RFP, not a lowest price RFP?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And, so the, the wellness committee was made up of three PD and two other city employees.
Yes.
And it was four to one?
Yes.
The three PD all voted in favor of Warrior Z?
One.
It was two, two and one?
It was, sorry. The one individual that voted for Elk Grove Strength and Conditioning was a police officer.
Okay, sworn staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions, but I'd be happy to kick off deliberations of.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, first and foremost, I want to say that the number one reason this program exists is for the health and well-being of our sworn officers, period. We want those men and women to be in the best shape they're in because we don't want the bad guys to have an upper leg on them. In our audit committee meeting today, we, we learned that actuarially, that's a bad thing for the city because hopefully that results in a longer life expectancy for those officers as well. Which is, that's a really bad joke and I apologize for making it, but I've got to find some light in this somehow because this is just a situation, and unfortunately, the mayor can attest to this, that at the sanitation district, every time we have an RFP and go to award a contract, it's something is jammed up about the whole thing and it becomes this contentious thing where now we're put in a position to air all of this dirty laundry and, and, and try to decipher some sort of sense out of it. And so why I asked the question about what type of RFP this was is because if it were lowest price, that's a pretty simple deal. As long as it's apples to apples, the one that comes in with the, with the smallest bill, that's the one who, who wins the, the day. However, this was a best value and the, the people who responded, who had a higher cost, were deemed by the majority of the committee to have the superior RFP. And were, got so far as to be told, yes, you are the selection, you're who we're going with, we just need to run it through council on the ninth. And so to the mayor's question, they made some, I think, overtures based on that information. And none of this has anything to say that the, the current vendor does not provide a quality product, you just didn't show as well on, on reviewing the RFP. And so I think to, to kind of do this bait and switch and then go back and want an extension of the current contract, to me, is not fair to the, the folks that participated in the program and it's not fair to the people that, that participate in the wellness program. And that's why what I'd like to suggest and why I asked the question, is that we do a bifurcated contract for a one-year with a two-year extension to go with Warrior Z. And in that one-year time, they have two tasks set in front of them beyond providing the actual program, and that is working with POA and PMA to, to, to get better buy-in and be more responsive primarily to their needs, but then to the larger needs of the city. And the second one is to grow, grow the participation rate and get, get all city employees thinking healthier. And I will say that I reached out to the president of the POA today and also had a follow-up email from him, that, that he agrees as far as the form of conducting business, this RFP looked like it was going to be awarded a certain way. And, and that the representatives who are objecting to it don't necessarily represent the attitude of, of the Police Officers Association. So that's, that's what I'll throw out there as my suggestion, but I'm anxious to listen to my colleagues.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, I agree that the, and by the, the email, Councilman Hume, I forwarded that on to the city clerk for distribution since it went to all of us, but I also spoke with the POA president. I agree that this, first and foremost, is for the health of our officers. We definitely want to encourage a wellness program for all the city staff. All indications from this, if you looked straight at the process, the process was going towards Warrior Z. So I will also agree that seems like we're kind of switching it back the other way. However, I would, I do appreciate, this is brought to light, it makes me wonder whether a, a, well, this type of wellness program is what's best suited for the city overall. And so the, the staff recommendation to extend for six months, I'm leaning towards awarding to Warrior Z for that six months to do exactly what Councilman Hume suggested as a test trial period, but also for them, for staff to work with POA, work with PMA. And frankly, you know, Warrior Z and, and Strength and Conditioning, to see whether this program, as it sits today, is, is the best for the city or is there something else? Some combination, maybe a stipend, maybe a gym membership? I, I don't know, there seems to be a lot of opportunities here, maybe our own facility, I don't know. But I, I think this has definitely opened up, you know, or, or a reason for us to kind of reevaluate this whole program in general. So, so I, I would kind of lean more towards a test, but for six months, to let staff evaluate the program.
And I guess I would just say the reason I landed on a year is because when you listen to there's significant capital investment, both in software, hardware and staffing, I don't think a six-month trial necessarily the juice is worth the squeeze.
That's a fair question. So let me just, staff, did, have you guys, how'd you arrive at the six months?
Because that was an extension of a current contract.
Yeah. Originally, we wanted to potentially extend it month to month, but due to the value of the contract and it has to come back to the council due to the financial threshold, we wanted to give ourselves enough time to have those conversations, come back with a staff report. The contract does have a 30-day cancellation clause, so in our minds, it was up to six months, but if we had made a determination in three weeks, we would start the process to kind of take those steps. We were just trying to give ourselves a little time because it does have to come back.
Okay. All right. Well then, okay, I see what you're saying. All right, thank you.
Member Detrick.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thanks for everybody coming out tonight to, to hear all sides of this. You know, I've spoken to staff pretty firmly. I was very disappointed with how this RFP process came about and flipped back and forth. I like the concept that Councilman Hume brought up about one year with a possible two-year extension. Having that tracking system, as far as the RFP process with the committee, it was a supermajority. So to me, it's, to me, it's not even a question. If you're gonna, if you're gonna put a committee together and not take advice from them, what's the point of the committee? Why not just come to us directly with the information and let us make the decision if we're not going to use them? I mean, this is a, to me, this is a huge process issue. I think the process was followed very clearly till the 11th hour when it was flipped. And I don't like to see when stuff like that happens. I think it makes the city look bad. I think it makes the council look bad and makes staff look bad. You know, I'd like to see where we do have, it was mentioned, some results oriented, so that there's an actual outcome at the end of that year that we can actually quantify, not only the number of people, but the results of what the difference in their fitness levels. I mentioned the chief, one of the things we have at PGA is an incentive program and one of them is they bring in, they'll do, they'll swab, they'll swab you to see if you're, if you smoke. If you don't smoke, after the lab analyzes it, you get a increase in your wellness account. They check your blood pressure, your cholesterol and body mass index, all those type of things. I think there's opportunities here where we can actually have a reward to our employees for actually taking advantage of the wellness program. Because usually that ends up if people are in better shape, take better care of themselves, they're not sick as often, they're just overall a better employee, for the, especially for the police officers putting together a program. A lot of mine is we don't want them to get hurt, whether it's on the job or off the job, we need them here and we need them healthy. You know, as far as Charlie goes, some of the questions came up, I've known Charlie since he was about 10 years old. I've seen him play baseball, football, watched him grow from a boy to a man, to a business owner, to a husband and now a father. He's excelled in everything I've watched him in. He grew up with, with my sons, his whole family did. But this has nothing to do about the personal relationships, it has to do with what is the right thing and what is the best for the city. You know, I've watched Charlie put together the CrossFit programs. You know, I've watched Charlie put together the CrossFit programs where did multiple fittest of Elk Grove, fittest of Roseville. Uh, as far as my knowledge is, brought in the only professional CrossFit competition that this city's ever seen. Brought in the top CrossFit athletes around the state. So with that, my recommendation would be fall in line with Councilman Hume to award the contract to Warriors for one year with a two-year option after one-year evaluation.
My question to Kara, um, is, uh, in the original, um, RFP, was it for a three-year?
Yes, it was.
So, um, this, this is the problem that I have with it. One, it, some, it doesn't sit right with me. The conduct of business is real important, transparency is real important. Putting an RFP out and then, uh, changing your mind, uh, when it clearly states that the committee voted in favor of this. Not only that, but where I was getting with my question with Corey, uh, I mean, not Corey, I'm sorry, um, Charlie earlier, uh, was along the lines of reliance. And, you know, I'm, I mean, uh, Mr. Hobbs is probably, uh, best qualified to answer this particular question, but, you know, when any business or any entity makes a genuine effort relying on information that's coming from the district, uh, from the, the city, that is, um, I think that's a partial performance, uh, you know, and, and certainly I would defer to Mr. City Attorney to, to weigh in on the legal stuff, if you could.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. What you're talking about is, it's called a doctrine of, of detrimental reliance, whether or not someone changes their position, um, in, in reliance upon representations. And that, what, and that doctrine, that legal doctrine may be fine in the private sector, it has no application in the public sector. The, uh, the idea that a party may have changed their position in reliance on the hope of a contract, for a public contract, will not give them any legal weight towards getting the contract. That having been said, if that's a consideration for the council in deciding whether or not you want to award the contract to Warrior Z, you can take that into consideration, but they would not have a legal right to it if they change their position based on staff recommendation that it would become in a council. Uh, no one has a contract until the council actually approves that contract, whether it be Warrior Z or the other vendor or somebody else. It's a council decision.
And that makes sense. It sounds like the threshold certainly wasn't crossed, um, but it still doesn't sit right with me. Uh, and, uh, my, my thought is unless there's, there's a rational basis, considering, uh, that if we're going to go in this direction of, um, of Warrior Z, um, I would be in favor of the, the full three-year contract. And I, I, I am open to the one-year, but considering the amount of investment that would be, um, you know, uh, poured into, uh, the program, um, I'd say, hey, we started this, we should just go with it. And of course, I had the opportunity to speak with the president of the POA as well. Uh, they have no position on it, they support the process, so...
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may?
Go ahead.
So I, you know, I, um, I shared this with the Zamoras as well, too, and that is, I, um, participate in RFPs in the city and the county, and when I get that phone call about the recommendation to the county board of supervisors or the city council in Sacramento or Citrus Heights is that you get funded, and I get really excited about it, as they did as well, and as they shared in their email. Um, and I read through the staff report, and I looked at the, the survey that was sent out, where 166 employees participated, but 62% do not participate in the current wellness, uh, plan. And so we had a conversation, the Zamoras and I, about the different types of, um, plans that would be, uh, created for different types of ages, body types, and, you know, whether you're a sworn officer or not. But more so than anything, um, the fact that they went through the process, we had a committee, um, work on this, and that the majority of the committee voted to award Warrior Z, I, you know, I, I go through this as well, too, all the time, as far as an RFP process, and I feel like there was a process that was created, there was a committee that was created, there was a recommendation that was made, and that we should follow through with that. And so I'm in favor of awarding Warrior Z for a year. I think that gives them the opportunity to, to test out what it's like working with our city employees, the police department here, and to see if it is the right fit. And I too had a conversation with our POA president, and, um, we talked about the POA working with Warrior Z and finding out what the right fit would be for the different, uh, for the sworn officers, non-sworn officers, and whatnot. And so, um, I, you know, the current, not to say that the current, um, contract we have isn't working out, but just the data itself and the results that was given in the, in the staff report, to me, was telling. And so I, you know, I want to say that I am in favor, I don't know what that noise is.
Somebody has a phone close to their microphone.
Probably. Um, I have a follow-up question, Kara. The, um, in, um, RFPs that we sent out, are the mechanisms sort of built in place in which we can check, uh, with, um, the one who's putting in the bid on a regular basis to see whether they're on track, uh, to meet their goals or, or not? Don't we have that built in, in place already?
You mean, uh, in a contract with the...
Or, yeah, for, for, for any service.
Yeah, there would be, uh, monthly check-ins with city staff.
Yeah, and so I, I think I recall this, this maybe have been a conversation with, with Sarah, uh, before. But that being the case, um, what I'm looking for, members, is what's the rationale for having a year? Why is that year magical? Yeah, help me.
So, yeah, so I'll, I'll let you know, just because I'm with you, I agree with the conduct of business and the process, you know, as far as how that bungled up. But I think that the reason why I suggested to bifurcate it and have that, that one-year period is because, given the fact that you have a petition citing opposition to going this way, one of the first orders of business for the Zamoras and Warriors Fitness is going to be winning over the hearts and minds of those who are participants in the program. And I think that because we are in contract negotiations with the PMA and the POA, that by saying that we, we're trying this for a year, that gets their buy-in and that they have a year to build this program and to make it into what they want it to be. And so that we are, while not necessarily staving off our decision in order to, to consult with them, which is not required as a part of our contract negotiations, we are saying, look, we heard you, and we want to make this successful, and we want your buy-in, and, but, so we're not going to commit you to three years.
I think that'll work, and is, is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second. You have a comment, Vice Mayor?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would just like to ask for one point of clarification. So this is a one-year contract with a one, two-year extension?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure it's not two, one-year extensions?
No, one, two-year.
One, two-year extension, okay.
And I was an aye.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, extension, all right. We're good. Next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with item 9.1, which is continued from April 25th, to consider an ordinance to extend the terms of the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement for a period of 90 days.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the Elk Grove City Council. Antonio Ablob, uh, Planning Manager and Project Planner for the item 9.1, the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement Amendment. With this project, applicant is requesting to extend the terms of the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement to allow additional time to complete the development. This project, uh, was heard in its entirety at the April 25th, 2018 council meeting. Uh, staff presented a full report at that meeting, um, of the extension request, and disclosed to council that a revised proposal had been recently submitted, um, but at that time, staff had not had enough time to re, fully review that, uh, proposal. After hearing from staff and the applicant, uh, the city council provided direction to staff to work on a 90-day interim extension, um, uh, ahead of the full extension. As far as the direction provided to staff, uh, this was to extend the term of the development agreement for an additional 90 days. Along with that would be, was a prohibition on approval of final maps and issue of building permits during the 90-day extension, uh, for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7, which is generally the portion of Sterling Meadows south of Build B Road. And, and again, this 90-day extension of the term of the DA, uh, would be an interim extension to allow additional time for staff and the applicant to work on mutually agreeable terms under which a further amendment, uh, to lengthen the term of the DA would be, um, supported. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council introduce in waifull reading by substitution of title, an ordinance finding that the project, um, is required no further environmental review under SEQA, and approving a 90-day extension for the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? There are no questions? No questions? All right. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, at this point, want to declare a public hearing open. And we'd like to invite the applicant to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council and staff. My name is Aiden Barry. I think I can be very brief tonight, I think we're close. We have reviewed the, the language, and I need a little bit of clarification associated with your first reading of the document tonight. It has to do with the effective date of the, um, extension. As I mentioned at our, um, previous hearing, um, as well as our actions over the last year, I have been pursuing a parallel path of recording the final maps consistent with the existing entitlements. Um, we had a, a very effective meeting with your staff, um, yesterday, um, on what I call the Ray Manger, uh, world-famous 30-point checklist, um, on each of our final maps that we're processing for the South. We hope to bring that back to the council within two tranches, um, in June, um, as we're trying to perfect the entitlements. That being said, our April 23rd offer was made, um, with extreme excitement because I think it represents a win-win for what we're trying to accomplish, as well as what we've heard back from the city over the last year. Specifically being a change of land use along the southern, uh, boundary of the property along Camer. So we think there's an opportunity. We, as of, as of yet, and I understand why, but I do want to let you know that we have not had any feedback from staff on our proposal as of yet. My understanding is they wanted us to get through this discussion of an extension before they gave us any feedback, and I respect that. So what I'd like to do tonight is clarify one point, and then I have a, a request for you. I'd like to clarify the effective date of the, um, agreement, the amendment number one. And I'd like to have that to be effective. It has a provision on, on when it's effective, having to do with council action, um, CCSD, CSD, as well as the signatures on the document itself. But I'd like to continue processing our maps, um, through, you have two opportunities in June for us to be in front of you, June 13th and June 27th. If we can make the effective date no earlier than either the 28th of June or July 11th, whatever is appropriate from the council's perspective, um, that will allow us to continue to do both processes. But, but importantly, and I mentioned this in my email to staff, um, when we suggested some revised language, that we're now withdrawing, is that I think it's very important that I communicate directly with this council and with staff as to our progress. And so I'm suggesting that maybe as a, to make sure that we're close, so let me back up and identify. We submitted a, a offer for discussion purposes on April 23rd. Have yet had any feedback. I don't know if we're this far apart or whether we're this far apart, but clearly it's, we presented an offer that we're waiting to get feedback from. What I'd like to do is report back to you on the 13th of June, as just a status update of how we're doing, so that we know whether we're moving towards a goal or whether we need to perfect the existing entitlements. But that would be my suggestion on reporting and a commitment to report back to this council as to our progress. So I'm asking for clarification relative to the effective date of the amendment, um, and then I'm really requesting, if you may, um, direction from this council to your staff to meet with us as soon as they can next week to get the initial feedback on our April 23rd offer. So I'm available to answer any questions, if you mind, Deb.
Okay, any questions?
Not this time.
There are no questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak? Want to close public comment? If you want to come back? Oh, you got one? You got one? Come on down, please.
I'm the guy they arrested for Christmas. First Christmas I ever missed. 10 days. Yeah, you want to know what they took? Three Bibles, one yearbook, and my cock rings! Um, my question, how much time do I have left? I wrote a book. Where's your camera at? My question was, 10 years ago, when is it an agency liable? You know, like the Tea Party, or, what did you say, CIA? Huh? When is an agency liable? You could have the rest of my time answering that one simple little question. And look for my book, it's coming out very soon. Want to see the first picture?
Thank you, sir. There are no additional speakers, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it. And I'd like to invite the applicant to come back, uh, for any rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, no rebuttal.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, at this point, uh, want to declare public hearing closed, and counter deliberation and direction. Members?
I gotta take a minute to compose myself here. I think we are close. And I think that 90-day extension allows the time to get this done. So I, I'm not sure I heard both requests. One was about an effective date, and what was the second?
To work with staff, uh, right away, or this week?
Oh, to come back whether or not the negotiations are moving forward? Okay.
I, I think we're close, too. I, did you? I was trying to recall whether we indicated an effective date in here.
Vice Mayor, I think I could help you with that, if you like. So the effective date of the development agreement, it, it sets forth a few conditions at Section 1 of the development agreement. One is that the city's ordinance approving this becomes effective, and I'll come back to that in just a second, because that's really the key here. The other one is that the consummate CSD approves the agreement because they are signatory to the regional development agreement. I'm sure the applicant is working with the CSD separately for that, that will be a condition of the effectiveness. And then, of course, that the amendment is signed by all parties. The most important piece for our purposes tonight is the ordinance approving the amendment. Because it's a development agreement amendment, it must be approved by an ordinance which requires a process under state law. Uh, what that means is that you would do a first read tonight, um, May 9th. Your second read, if you bring it back at the next meeting, which is the normal course, would be on May 23rd, and then the ordinance is effective 30 days later, making that June 22nd. So if you made no changes on this, and assuming you followed the path that I just described, which would be the normal course, this would be effective on June 22nd. What your applicant is asking you is to extend that date to either, I heard, June 28th or July 11th. It sounds like either one works for him. Uh, the reason July 11th, I assume, is the date chosen, is because that's when the development agreement expires. So I guess the choice for the council is, if you approve what's on the docket here tonight, it would be a June 22nd effective date. But you could hardcode that date, any date after that, if you like.
Okay, thank you. Aiden, do you want to say something?
Completely concur with the city attorney's analysis, and so very, so that it's clear, we're requesting that the effective date to be the, hardcoded to the 28th, please.
Okay. Anything else? Questions, comments? Deliberation? Right?
Any comment?
Good. Member Detrick?
You know, Aiden, I appreciate the time you took to come meet privately with me to, um, walk through your steps, and then I was able to give you kind of my view of things as well. I don't know if I'd agree quite as close with the other two council members that were real close. I told you, we were a mile apart, so maybe somewhere in between. Okay, hopefully that works, but, uh...
Do you feel close enough that, uh, I mean, that we would, we should change the effective date, or you want to leave the effective date as is on, as the staff recommends?
Well, I think there, was there a motion to move that date already, or to leave it where it is?
It was just, we were just having questions. There was no motion. I think he's asking for the 28th, not the 22nd.
Want the 28? Yes. Okay.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make that motion then, to, um, amend it to the effective date, was that six days later, the 28th?
Yeah, so this is an ordinance, so if you're ready to make a motion, you'll want to, uh, introduce in waifull reading, and then, uh, note that your motion modifies the effective date to June 28th. I can help you with that when we get there.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Okay, make the motion, introduce... Okay, make the motion, introduce and await the forereading by substitution of title only, only, an ordinance finding that the Strong Meadows Development Agreement Amendment, EG 01-130A, requires no further environmental review from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, section 15162, and approving the development agreement amendment for the project with the change.
With the effective date being June 28th for the development agreement amendment.
June 28th.
All right, got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, extension. Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I have a brief presentation on our action plan tonight. You have, you have weighed in on the allocations already, so I can go ahead and do the presentation or I can just highlight the one thing that I wanted to highlight for you and then take questions. Do you have a preference?
Members?
One thing?
Go ahead.
Highlight the one thing. We are going to get more money this year than I was estimating. We are actually getting about $130,000 more than, than we got last year. And so we'll be applying that overage, 15% of the overage amount to administration and then the remainder of it will go towards a capital project, our Carr Bramp Accessibility Project. And so with that, I'd be, I'd love it if you would approve our action plan and we'll file it ahead.
Actually, I'll wait for public comment, sorry.
Shall we declare the public hearing open first and then ask if there's any members of the public who like to speak, since there are none, I want to close public comment. The public, public hearing closed.
Now I'll move to accept the action plan.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, extension. Next item.
That'll take us to item 9.3, which is a public hearing to consider determination of public convenience or necessity for beer and wine sales at Los Quattro Market located at 8698 Elk Grove Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Sarah Kirschguster with planning.
Welcome back, by the way, Sarah.
Thank you. The project consists of a determination for a letter of public convenience or necessity for a type 20 license for alcohol sales off sale from ABC. The type 20 license allows for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. The Los Quattro Market will be located within an existing shopping center on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. The market will be a specialty Mexican grocery store selling Mexican grocery items, fresh sweetbreads, produce, marinated meats, along with a limited selection of beer and wine. The applicant has indicated that approximately 10% of gross sales will be from beer and wine. The project requires the PCN determination because it is located in an over-concentrated census tract as defined by ABC. According to ABC, one off-sale license is allowed within this tract before it is over-concentrated. There are currently three active off-sale licenses in this census tract. The nearest location is the Dollar Tree, which is located in the same shopping center. No schools or parks are located within 1,000 feet of the project site. The police department does not have a concern for the issuance of this PCN determination. The addition of the license at this location will most likely result in a redistribution of existing sales rather than new customers in the area. And the applicant states that the sale at this location will provide a one-stop-shop atmosphere for customers. The project is exempt from SEQA and staff recommends approval of the PCN determination and I am available for questions. I believe the applicant, Mr. Mansuri, is also here to answer questions if you have them.
Okay. Any questions? Right. Thank you. I want to declare public hearing open. Would like to invite applicant, Mr. Mansuri, to come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and councils. My name is Abbas Mansuri and we are happy to be in Elk Grove. We've been here 15 years. And we're so excited to open the Las Quattro Mexican Market. I'm from India myself and my wife, she's from Mexico and she has a previous experience and we're so excited to do the business in Elk Grove.
Excellent.
Welcome. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, if you don't have anything to add, you're good? Okay.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Will you have Senorita bread there?
I'm sorry, sir?
Senorita bread. Will you have Senorita bread?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the requirement would be, Vice Mayor, is if we go get Senorita bread, we better sign up for the fitness program. Thank you, Mr. Mansuri. Want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. And if the applicant would like to come up and make any final statements. You can wave if you like. No? You're good? Waving? All right. And I want to declare a public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction.
I'll move the item.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, extension. Next item.
It goes to section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, and the one item is 10.1, which is to receive the fiscal year, our proposed fiscal year 2018, 2023 capital improvement program.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Kevin Bucy. I'm the interim capital program manager for the City of Elk Grove. I'm here to present the 2018, 2023 proposed capital improvement program. Before I start, I want to talk about some projects we awarded. We've awarded 30 projects. Got some nice pictures I want to show you. So we have the Civic Center project, you can see on the left, the Camden Trail project. We've also got the Bilby and Big Horn Road Extension project. That includes the sewer lift station down in the new growth area of the city. Those are the projects that are either in construction or recently completed construction, ones that I felt would be good to highlight. And we have some projects that are just getting started. Our, we've got the Bradshaw Sheldon Roundabout, the Laguna Creek Trail that we just got bids on this week, so that will be coming to you guys for awards soon. We've got the animal shelter, which, you know, you, most of you were able to attend. And those are the projects I want to highlight. So let's talk a little bit about the upcoming five-year program. Essentially, the five-year program reflects the city's capital project priorities. The first year becomes part of the annual budget and the remaining years are forecast. The, the five-year program has 145.7 million. It's 87 total projects. And 16 of those new, our new projects weren't in previous CIPs. So want to talk about how a CIP is developed. So a CIP is developed, essentially the five-year gets updated annually. What goes into that? We look at the general plan, other planning documents like the Trails Master Plan, the fee programs, what, what improvements are identified in the fee programs, any operational, safety and maintenance related needs that we have been identified, any city council direction, any advisory committee inputs like the Trails Committee, input from stakeholders, other agencies and as well as the public. And then looking at all those needs and planning documents, we're looking against what are the funding availability and what are the available staff resources to do that work? That's what goes in. That's something we do every year. So this year we did, when we did the CIP, we've been trying to continue to improve the CIP. I got an example here. So this is the CIP from essentially two years ago and this is the current CIP. So we're trying to make it really easy for everybody to understand and read. So a couple of examples of that. So we have 11, we had 11 categories. We've kind of, we've made, we've shrunk it down to five, five simple categories. So we've got alternative transportation modes, which is essentially pedestrian, bicycles and transit. That's, that's, those are those projects. And then we've got community enhancements, which is landscaping, lighting, plazas and parks. We have drainage, which is essentially flood control, stormwater quality, conveyance, and we've got facilities. Facilities are all the city facilities. We could, animal shelter, civic center, corp yard, city hall, those facility projects. And then we have the traditional transportation, pavement resurfacing, traffic control, traditional transportation projects. So trying to keep it as simple as possible for everybody so they can read the CIP and understand. And the CIP, it's important to note, does not include minor public works projects under 250,000. That's in the municipal code as well as studies. Does not include studies. So I just want to clarify that. The table of contents, CIP. So we have an introduction. It lays out the CIP and how to read it, you know. So essentially when you're reading other parts later, it explains that. That's the introduction. There's a fund description, so when you look at a project, you want to see how it's, you look at the fund, you can look at these fund descriptions and see, okay, that's where that fund is. That's what that fund does. And then we go into the five programs. Each program has a, you know, their projects. Each project has a project sheet and a map with it, so you can kind of see what, what the plan is, with the description of the project and the funding and the year the funding is programmed. And then, you know, for clarity, we wanted to provide a list of the minor public works, projects and studies that is, that are ongoing as well. That gets adopted with the annual budget, but want to provide that for reference. The future project list, what projects we have looked at but didn't make it in the CIP. And then we have the completed project list, which are projects that we have completed since incorporation. So that's a list that we update annually. That was something that was requested last year and we added. And we have a project index, so you can look at it and really figure out, if you're looking for a specific project, you can find it in the index and then go right to the project and take a, take a detailed look at it. So. Okay, so I'm going to go and talk about the five programs fairly briefly, but what we have is the alternative transportation modes. It's 19 million in the program for the next five years. There's 20 projects. I kind of had to highlight a couple of projects for each program. So the Elk Grove and Laguna Boulevard UPR crossing interim bike lane improvements. So that was something that city council had requested. Essentially, how can we improve, at least in the interim, class two bike lanes across the UPR tracks on the western side of the city? So that project is something that is moving forward. That's in the CIP this year. Community enhancements, 12.9 million in this program. That's 11 projects, a couple of projects to highlight, Old Town Plaza Phase Two. We have the Phase One project that we're, we're currently using and built the bathroom in the parking area. So the Old Town Plaza Phase Two is shown here in the graphic and essentially we're going to provide some additional bike parking and some more accessibility from the street and then it's going to utilize the existing bathroom that was constructed. So it's just in a phase. And then we're also working on the Civic Center Nature Area, which you've seen previously. That is another project I wanted to highlight. So drainage, drainage, 13.4 million in this program. It's got 10 projects. One important project to highlight is the SEPA Shed Sea Channel Right-of-Way and Permitting. The reason why this is important is because we are looking at, in the new growth area, providing essentially employment-oriented development. And so we have done the Bilby Road and Big Horn Extension, which included all the transportation and utility infrastructure needs. The missing part of that is the drainage component and this project allows for that last drainage component to come in, get everything permitted, so as developments come in, they can essentially build that, build those drainage facilities. Facilities, next five years, 5.7 million, 18 projects. One I wanted to highlight, I thought would be of interest, transit fleet facility, electrical infrastructure, so as our transit fleet transitions from, you know, other fossil fuels, we're going to be looking at electrical vehicles, electrical, electric buses. Transportation, 94.5 million in this program. There's 28 projects, a couple of projects to highlight. Signalization of Whitelock Parkway and Capé Verde Drive. That was requested by several members of the public. Essentially, there's an existing development that's building out with residential and there's a school there and we're just trying to make sure that we have these intersection there to get them where they want to go. I've got a picture of railroad street improvements, so essentially what this is, is we have Old Town Plaza Phase One and we're going with Phase Two and the existing roadway is not in good condition. There's no sidewalks. There's some parking needs out there and this essentially reconstructs railroad street as well as the sidewalks and adds the parking lots that are needed. It's allow residents in that residential area to come in and visit the Old Town Elk Grove area. So we have, you know, we prepared this and then we presented it here and there has been revisions because as Bob had mentioned, we, our SB1 funding is coming in. And so I wanted to make sure you guys are aware of changes that we would be making between this proposed one that we've, we have here and the final one that'll come later. So essentially, we have SB1 funds that CTC staff has recommended. It's going to be voted on next, next week. It's 200,000 for the Franklin Boulevard Cycle Track. So we want to, right now that's funded using local funds and I want to, essentially want to capture these federal, these grant monies and not use our local fund. So when you see the update to this, we'll essentially capture those SB1 funds, assuming CTC, CTC votes on that. We've also got the $3 million for the Camer and the $7 million for Grantline, which we're also going to try to reflect. And then as Sarah mentioned earlier, there's CDG funding that we would also apply. That would get some of our Measure A maintenance money back. And with that, I'm available for any questions and comments that you may have.
Questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
I'm good for now. Thanks, Kevin. I know that's a lot.
Lot of good work going on. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well done. Thank you, sir. All right. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak? Want to close public comment? Right?
Okay. Mayor, I got to have a couple of requests. So first of all, I'd like to, you know, we talked earlier about, about the traffic that's increasing in the city and, and so I think it's imperative that because things take so long to get going, that I'd like to see a, a study accelerated, which is for our bus rapid transit or express bus system to at least get some, some sort of BRT light established in the city sooner than later. So I would request that we advance, revise the table on page 274 to advance, there's a current, the Bus Rapid Transit Services Plumber Engineering Study is currently scheduled for FY 2122, so I'd like to see that moved up. To start, start a planning and, a planning process for that system. And then secondly, there's a lot of disruptive technologies that are coming down the pike. Everybody's heard about autonomous vehicles. That technology is accelerating all the time. We have good, good information or from a good source, information from a good source. That five to seven years, we're going, we can see these vehicles on the road. So I'd like to, to get us ready as soon as possible for that too. And that gets into striping where that the technology looks at, is able to see the stripes and then signage and then the cameras that they also utilize, these vehicles utilize. Those are the things that, how the feeds back into the computer and the cars are, are able to know where they're going. So what I would like to also, that request is to just, not necessarily for this document this time, but just have staff to start looking to see, to plan out what a program would look like, like what it would cost and how long, you know, like an implementation plan. So those are the two things I'd request.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on that. I, I agree in concept with getting, working on BRT sooner rather than later, but I would assume that these allocations are a zero-sum game and if we move a million-dollar project forward from FY 2122, then some other project in FY 1819, or several projects get bumped?
Not necessarily in this case, I think, because it's, I think, I believe that's transit impact fee funds. And, but I think what we had talked about before was essentially doing a smaller study to do, not necessarily a full BRT that includes, you know, fair vending machines and, and, and and the buses that are, that are easily identifiable. It's more of a BRT light where we could start a service because a number of the, a number of the destinations aren't there yet, for instance, the casino or the, or the mall. And the idea was to be, maybe to start a process where you have 15-minute headways. So we, we add enough buses, we add enough drivers to, to, because right now Route 110 is basically the BRT route. It's at 30-minute headways. And so the question would be, what would it take to get to 15-minute headways and start the process of, of getting people used to using that system?
Right.
And so I don't think you need the full million dollars to do that. I think what we're talking about is a little bit less than that. And so we had looked at, I think you're probably talking about $100,000 to $120,000 to kind of take a look at how we implement that and then come back. Essentially, when we do this document again next year, is to be able to take those recommendations out of the study and, and put them in here. And in the meantime, we, we develop that. We come back to council and we'd, you get to see it. You get to, you know, obviously have input. And then whatever recommendations come out of that would end up as capital improvements in next year's version of this so that we could perhaps implement, you know, the BRT light next, not next fiscal year, but the following.
Okay. In that case, I support that change.
Thank you. I support that. Thank you.
My, my, my only caution really is, you know, I mean, if, if it's too intense for staff, that, I I would say approach with caution, but I would support it, you know, if it's manageable and it's doable, from your perspective as a director, so...
We, we can do it, that's not a problem.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. That being the case, let's adjourn the meeting at 9:31. Be gone.